Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of July 31st, 2017. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business for the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And today is an open meeting night. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. I'll call our public hearing consent agenda, items one through seven.
Would anyone like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
If not, we can vote on these items. There's just two, items one and five were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by John, seconded by Cindy.
Or shall I adjourn?
No, discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Item eight is application of Isis Aparicio doing business as Cielto Mexican Restaurant for a Class I liquor license at 1601 Q Street, Suite D. Step right up here to the right, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Aparicio, would you tell us about your application?
Okay, my name is Isis Aparicio and I am the owner of El Cielito Mexican Restaurant on 16th and Q Street. And basically, it's just a Mexican restaurant. I've worked with my family for quite a few years. We have a few other, they have a few other restaurants in town. And I'm just hoping to apply for the liquor license so I'm able to bring more people in by selling margaritas and beer.
Okay, is that associated at all with El Cielito Lindo on?
No, I'm the sole owner on this one.
Sole owner, okay, very good. Any questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Next is item nine, manager application of Richard Hodges for Lake Venture LLC doing business as Fresh Time Farmers Market at 5220 O Street.
Aye.
Just raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Uh, Richard Hodges, uh, the business address or the?
That's fine.
5220 O Street, Fresh Time Farmers Market.
Okay, tell us about your application, sir.
Well, it was a liquor license that had to be updated since we dismissed our associate or assistant store director. I'm what they call a key manager at the store and they needed someone other than the store director on the liquor license. So, it's kind of a process getting it going, but that's what they want, so that's why I'm here.
Any questions for Mr. Hodges? Cindy?
Not a question so much as a comment, Mr. Hodges. Fresh Time has been a wonderful corporate citizen in northeast Lincoln. We're so glad to welcome you and I know you've had some local bands from our schools and I know you just had a Farmers Market outdoors last weekend.
Yes, we did, thank you.
How did that go?
It went pretty well. I mean, it was our very first one and it would do, other than Facebook and the social media, we really, it's hard to get behind it, only because it's a, you know, a mass-produced ad for the whole country, you know, like 63 stores, so it's gonna get better.
So, everybody had one on Saturday?
Every store in the, in the region, there's 63 stores and we're the furthest most, we're the westmost store right now in the west region. There's only five in the region, but yeah, we're, one in Grand Island coming up in 2018 as I understand it, so yeah, we're proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, next item, please. By the way, Councilman Jane Raybold is excusing herself because she has a personal interest in the business coming before us now.
Item 10 is the manager application of Rob Stider for the Super Savers and Russ's Markets in town. Hi, Rob. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Rob Stider, 9610 Glass Ridge Court. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Tell us about this, what's going on? There's a lot of applications.
Yeah, so we're just transitioning the license into me, my name. In the past, we've done it in the store director's name and as we transition store directors from one location to the next, it becomes burdensome to not only our time, but your guys' time and the state's time, so we'll put them in my name and hopefully it'll be less time-consuming for you guys.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Stider? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Seeing none, Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of items.
Wait a minute, let's do the item 10 first and then call Jane back in for the other two.
Okay, I'd move approval of item 10.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero.
And while we're summoning our colleague, I would move for approval of items eight and nine.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy. Any discussion on these two? We're voting on eight and nine. Please call the roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 11 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of July 1st through the 15th, 2017.
Rick Payes in Law Department, just like to clarify that one of the claims being denied is a claim of Walter Broer and this deals with the use of Pioneer's Park and the bridle pass out there. And cities recommend denial of this claim because it doesn't constitute a claim under political subdivision toward Claims Act. It's not a claim for monetary damages. It's really asking for the city council to enjoin the operation of the bridle paths by parks in the sense that they've been barricading some of the paths as claimed to cause hazardous condition. They think that the use out there is not being appropriately based on the city's acquisition of the property back in the 1920s. It's not being continuation of the original park recreational uses, but those type of comments and claims are probably not appropriate for a political subdivision Claims Act application and that's why we recommend it be denied. It's just not a valid claim.
Any questions for Rick? Jane?
Do you have any suggestions to the group who have these concerns and how they?
Well, they're, they're asking to bring an injunction. That was what they're, one of their thoughts, I mean, that's obviously a legal right, but I know that Parks and Recreation had a meeting last week to meet with stakeholders and try to come up with a plan of action and some guidance and I think willing to work with the people and try to accommodate some of their concerns, but beyond that, I think that's a starting point and maybe a direction from the city council is to, you know, what you might be looking for, but it's not a claim you can approve. It's not, not what you can do.
Other questions?
I see that Lynn Johnson, did you have any further details on that?
I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, my name's Lynn Johnson, I'm with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. We have been working on a process to try to reach out to some of the people who use Pioneer's Park for horseback riding. I think there's perhaps a misconception out there that the intent is to discontinue that activity. It is not. We had a meeting last Tuesday where we had about 75 people in attendance. We broke down into small groups, had discussions, and we got feedback and I would kind of characterize the feedback that we've gotten to date is there is an interest in looking at extending the trail system. There's an interest in looking at improving maintenance of the system. There's also an interest in getting additional information so that people know when there's other large events in the park so that they don't plan to ride horses in the park that day. We are working through all those issues. We are working on putting together kind of a more detailed management plan. We then plan to reach out to the folks who ride horses out there and the folks who have stables adjoining the park to kind of get their feedback on the plan and the intent very much is to move forward, have this be a cooperative working relationship and I would say that for the most part, the meeting on Tuesday evening was very much that way. It was people sharing their interests and their enthusiasm and their good ideas.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? And this item includes the whole item, which is all the pending claims against, against
Mr. Chairman, the members of the council, my name is Walt Broer, B-R-O-E-R, 2455 West Van Dorn, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68522, and I am here speaking on behalf of our committee of Save the Trails in Pioneer's Park. I have a couple of handouts. We do have a video that the Parks Department has seen and as Mr. Johnson said just now that we have been working feverishly together as a team. The tort claim was mainly to get attention and get this brought to the table so that we could. And if I'm going to go back a little bit in history, as most of you know, that the, Pioneer's Park is on a national historic register. Part of the historic register, a contributing factor, a huge part, was the four miles of bridle path trails that Ernst Heminghast designed in the park. That has been that way since I've been riding it for some 75 years. I have a copy of a map here, I'd like, I could either leave you or not at this particular point.
Please give it to the clerk.
And it shows, it shows the trails as they were except for one part toward the west and as Mr. Johnson said, they have been working with us to revise the trails.
Elmo Teresa.
Can you? Put it on the elbow.
Okay, thank you.
If you put it on the overhead.
Well, on the elbow right there.
On the overhead.
Yep.
Face up.
There you go.
There you go. Okay.
Oh, there we go, okay. The orange coloring is the trails as they were originally designed. Lynn, Lynn, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I can make this a little smaller so that more everyone can be visible.
That's brightness. That's the wrong brightness, that's brightness. Make it bright again though, too. A little bit brighter. Okay, now make it smaller.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's as small as it's.
Yeah. Okay.
It's really, at this particular point, I don't think we need to take the council's time. However, the, Mr. Johnson and his staff, they've redesigned some of the trails. The situation that we're really against is that the original park had four miles of trails and we're down to about a mile and a third. We used to have a lot of outside folks come in from surrounding territory, Crete, Denton, all over, trail their horses in and ride the four miles of trails. What we're asking for is nothing more than what was there originally designed, is to have those trails restored to where they were and maintained. The Park Department, again, thanks to Mr. Johnson's staff, they've made a lot of progress. We've had obstacles that were taken off, an old sign that was taken off just recently at our request at the meeting and Mr. Johnson is very right, we did have a very constructive meeting on Tuesday night, an open forum attended by about, what, 75, 80 some, some personnel. We have a little video here, I'm going to leave and leave it on record. We also have about 30 signatures, pages, which I'm going to just leave for record. And, and the tort claim, I'm going to let our attorney, who is also a member of our Horse Committee Council, speak next. All we'd like to do at this point is work with Department of Parks and have about four miles. We know that may not be possible. We knew the cross-country runners have been introduced into the park and we can work with the runners, we just need to all work as a team and that's what really the tort claim is about. Any questions?
Any questions?
Good afternoon, Rick Bouche, 3040 Stratford Avenue, Lincoln, 68502. It's B-O-U-C-H-E-R. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, good afternoon. I hope you had a safe and eventful summer. I appeared before you as a horse rider and an outdoor enthusiast first. I guess I was just hired as a lawyer also. So, I want to tell you that I've only been riding for seven or eight years. One of those things where a client said, "You need to get a horse," and I said, "Well, if you find one 25 years old, doesn't buck, bite, or kick and is healthy, let me know." About 10 years later, he actually called up and said, "I've got that horse for you." When I started riding, lots of people in the park, I think if there's been a lessening of park visitors or horse riders, I think it in part is because of the deterioration of the trails. For instance, the lot where trailers used to pull in and stop and park for several hours is now a materials lot for the park division, whether it's dirt, gravel, or otherwise. I tell you, I want to be, all what we are looking for are M&amp;Ms and I don't mean the chocolate candy. I mean maintenance and mileage, whatever we can do, whether that is attributable to the parks or simply to you as a council, visiting the budget and cutting personnel there, I don't know. I don't pay that close of attention until we got to the point that the most, three scenic routes within the entire park have been closed this year, simply shut down. I think, you know, you have ordinances which say anyone that barricades or blocks or is hostile towards an animal, whether a horse or otherwise, is guilty of a misdemeanor. We have trails that are physically blocked by timbers that have been brought in. Now, a horse doesn't know those things and, you know, if you're trying to make it turn right, there are different ways to do that. So, what I tell you is that, as a lawyer who has represented county government for about 25 years, I can tell you I don't have the prescience that Mr. Payo does. The tort claims law doesn't require that you specify money only for damages. It was passed, came to with the idea that political subdivisions would be able to negotiate for about six months to see if it can be resolved. So, it doesn't require that, it requires wrongful conduct. You didn't acquire it, it was gifted by John Harris, whose relatives came back about 30 years ago and said, "Make no mistake, the horse trail was an essential feature." So, it has been that way since the beginning and the end and it started out as four miles and now it's down to about a mile plus. But again, the three areas, the three most scenic areas have been removed. Now, having said that, that there are lots of theories that have been used under Nebraska law, which Mr. Payo should know about, inverse condemnation is one. I'm defending a group of cases brought by county government, whether that's impacted by bridges closing or otherwise. The political subdivision tort claims act is really an effort and it was part, for instance, of the Beatrice Six case. You know, they too betted that it wasn't part of the law and they ended up with a $28 million judgment. They're seeking no damages. I want to impress upon you that the owners in Lancaster County, the stable owners are being impacted. You're seeing fewer and fewer because they're going to Hickman, Bennett, Palmyra, all because Pioneer's Park is no longer an attractive venue for many riders. I don't do dressage, you know, people say, "Are you a dressage rider or English?" I tell them, I do whatever I can to stay in the middle of the horse.
One minute.
Thanks so much. Oh, one last thing, I think what Mr. Broer, who filed the tort claim, would ask of you is not to deny the claim. I think if you deny the claim, it becomes an either-or. Either something is done or a lawsuit is filed. I think he would ask you to hold it in abeyance. You have six months. If you don't do anything in six months, he can then go into court, but if you leave it open, I think everyone continues to try to get along and cooperate with all of the outdoor enthusiasts that share Pioneer's Park.
Thank you, Mr. Bouche. Any questions? Cindy?
No, Mr. Bouche?
Yes.
Hi. So, when was this filed? How long ago?
You know, it seems to me it was filed in April, I think. I don't, what was it?
May 3rd.
Mr. Broer said May 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
We could put these into the record also.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Please come forward.
Thank you, my name is Linda Whitforth, 1940, West Hill Street, and I wanted to just speak on behalf of the Pioneer's Park and the horse bridle paths and the work that we're doing with the Parks Department and a positive opinion about the park. I did put together the video and the little brochure. What I wanted to say is that my family moved to Lincoln, I do have a horse, I ride out there. I didn't start riding out there, I had several other stables that I was at prior and that after doing some of the history and the research of the park, I find it to be such a unique thing for Lincoln. And putting together the video, I looked at some of the unique things that Lincoln offers and one of the reasons I moved to Lincoln was that it is a friendly place, that there are green spaces, that there is the Haymarket, the Pinnacle, the development of the Antelope Parkway. There is a continuous development to make it a friendly, unique place for families. And Pioneer Park is extremely unique in its history and location. I just want to say that it was an attraction for me to stay in my area, to bring my horse here, talking with other horse riders, they would do the same if the trails were maintained and if there were more of them. So, I think then not only with Pinewood Bowl, the cross-country runners, the nature center, all of those things that Pioneer Park offers, this is one really unique thing that Lincoln has and to include the horses is really wonderful to see the children and people interact when I ride my horse through and stop and say, "Can we take our picture with your horse? Can we pet your horse?" And it's not only me, I have seen other people on our webs, our Facebook page, share pictures and they're always interacting with people in the park. So, I think it's really unique. I don't know of another place in Nebraska this happens.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Other questions for Mrs. Whitforth? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Other sworn and pending.
If I'm, on any claim, please come forward. So, when I call, people want to talk, just pop right up, please.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I have a claim for...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Brenda Gurkic, address 5121 West Luke, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68524. I have a claim for, I believe it's $240.88 for a new windshield. Before any of the storms had hit, I had a huge chunk of a tree fall on my car that was parked on the street. I had called the city parks, talked to Janet, she said to send in a claim and then I requested service of the trees in our area and then they weren't able to come out for, okay, when I spoke to her, it was 4-26 of 17. They were not able to come out and take care of the tree till 5/23 of 17, so it was pretty much almost a month. And when they did trim the tree that was in front of, or where my car had the windshield, they had to remove 20 branches, that's how much needed to be trimmed on it. So, anyway, that is my, what I'm asking is just to be reimbursed and I had just put a new windshield in on February 23rd and this happened mid-April, so it was like two months old and it was a pretty bad damage I have, if it's okay. It wasn't just a crack, I'm not sure how.
It'll pop up.
It'll pop up, okay. I don't know, that's not, probably not very, very good. And then there's this one. These were taken with the supposed smartphone. And so, it's not just a little crack, it's quite a bit of cracking, which I do need to have it taken care of and then I have a copy of the bill. From February 23rd, this is the, the new one I had just put in. And, and this is a, a pic, well, it really won't show you how many branches they had to do, but this is how good it looked after they had trimmed it up. And I just feel like in the airpark area, that we just need a little more maintenance on the trees. We, it's been a, I'm sure it's been a while, this was even before the storm, so that's my request.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. Gurkic? Cindy?
I'm sorry, could you clarify for me, when did you report it to the city?
Okay, I actually spoke to, I believe it was...
And I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the damage, I'm talking about the tree itself. When you first spoke to the city about the tree?
Right, that was Janet. She said to send in a claim. I'm not exactly sure the date I talked to her, but I sent it in, or talked to her, 4-26, sorry.
And had you spoken to the city before the tree fell and damaged your car?
No, no, I hadn't, but like I said, when I did then finally, it did take 30 days for them to come anyway, so it, that was just my thinking was, yeah, so. Any more questions?
Other questions?
Is I clear as mud?
We have staff.
Thank you.
Staff question? Mr. Payo? Yes, would you mind elaborating on the city attorney's position on this?
I think our position is, position we take all the time, like on sidewalks and street trees, it might damage or fall when the city is not aware of a problem or occurrence of it. We have no negligence on our part in not responding ahead of something happening and there's no evidence that we've failed to maintain trees in a proper manner, so we just feel that this is an unfortunate circumstance that's just not what the city's liable for, so.
So, to summarize, unless the city has prior knowledge of the condition, the city is not liable?
Basically, yes.
Cindy?
Sure. Does the city have any kind of a plan for trimming these trees or a standard that we set how often we trim trees in that area?
I think Lynn Johnson might still be here, he could probably answer what that policy
You can, you can have a seat.
Oh, okay, because I wanted a rebuttal, can I? No?
Good evening, Lynn Johnson, again with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Let's wait until after. Just have a seat over here. Yes, you can.
Essentially, our pruning cycle at this point is about 20 years. That's based on the amount of funding and how often we're, we're able to get out and trim trees. We don't have at this point, because of funding, we don't have a proactive response program. It really is reactive. Ideally, we would have a regular routine pruning cycle and at this point, because of funding, seven, eight years ago, that pruning cycle was about 10 to 12 years because of the number of trees we've added to the system and, and the fact that the funding has essentially remained static, we are stretching out the pruning cycle on our trees, so we don't, we don't have what I would say is a specified pruning cycle for trees. As, as Mr. Payo said, we weren't aware that there was any problem with this tree until we received the call that a limit come down and damaged the vehicle, so, and truly, it is an unfortunate situation.
Thank you.
John?
What do you consider to be a normal pruning span of years?
It's a great, it's a good question. The recommendation from the National Arboretum Cultural It's a great, it's a good question. The recommendation from the National Arboretural Society is ideally, we would be pruning trees on about a 10 to 12-year cycle. And as I said, we haven't been pruning trees on a 10-year, 10 to 12-year cycle for probably at least seven or eight years at this point. And it's really, we add about 1,000 trees to the system every year, but we have not added additional maintenance staff during that period.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Ms. Gergerich?
Just in spite of what he said, it still took 30 days after I notified the city to come out there and trim the trees. And at that time, I mean, all of Air Park really does need to be tended to. So it still did take 30 days. And you wanted proof that there was negligence or that the trees needed to be trimmed. Well, this is a good one. But if the windshield hadn't been new, I wouldn't have really, it's not that big a deal. But I still would like to see them pay more attention to the Air Park area out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 12, approving a multi-year contract between the city and houseman construction to provide construction manager at-risk services, fire stations 10, 12, 16, and police-fire station 15, for a term compensing upon execution of the contract through September 1st, 2019.
Would anyone like to testify on this item?
I think Bob's going to come up.
Okay. Here we go.
Evening, council. Bob Walla, purchasing agent. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to this contract.
Jane, then Cindy?
Bob, I'm reading the construction management at-risk contract. Isn't it typical to have one or two members of the city council also on, I guess, advisory?
You're reading AR 29, correct? Is that what you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we had one member of the council, and that was John Camp. That was on the selection committee.
Okay. That's good.
Cindy?
So my question was, online, there was not a copy of the contract accessible? There wasn't a link to it?
Correct. The contract is still being finalized at this time. Chris Conley has been working on it, and we will continue to complete it with all of the details that go into it. The contract that we are writing right now, though, is subject to change based on the guaranteed maximum price that we'll receive at a later date as well.
So I guess I'm a little concerned with being asked to approve a multi-year contract where we don't know the terms of the contract? And it wasn't available for the, for the public to look at prior to this hearing? And this is a public hearing, so I don't know that anyone knew if they wanted to testify since they didn't get to look at it?
Chris Conley, Assistant City Attorney. Here's what I can do. I can explain a little bit of the process, how this works. I haven't been involved in all of this, but I, I have some experience with these contract, construction manager at-risk contracts. It's a, it's a delivery method for building buildings is what it is. And there's, there's various methods for, for doing project, building projects like this. There's design, bid, build, and there's design, build. And then there's a couple of variants of these construction manager methods. And so the way this particular one works is that there's a selection committee that is put together to select a contractor. The contractor then, we, we sign the contract. You're right, there is not a definite dollar amount set yet because the contractor will be working with the architect to help with the design. And the, the design is not ready yet, okay? When it gets to a point where the design and the drawings are at 60% completion, at that point, the contractor will then tell us, here's what it's going to cost to build these buildings, okay, to build these fire stations. And that's the guaranteed maximum price that, that Bob was referencing. And so at that point, the, the proposal is made. The city can either accept it, reject it, or try and modify it and, and negotiate with the builder to do it. There's a couple of advantages to doing this system over other delivery systems. And that is, one, it allows the, the project to get started while the design process is still going on. Yes, we don't have a fixed dollar amount yet, but we will have one, and the, the council can still decide to walk away. There will still be, there will be some work that will get started at the very beginning, once the contract is signed. But the, the guaranteed maximum price is, is what you're really going to be interested in to see what that is. Now, we, the, the process has gotten to the point of selecting the contractor. And, and so the, we're at the point where we sign the initial contract. And then there will be some work that will be done before the guaranteed maximum price comes. And I don't know when, we expect to get to the 60% threshold. But when that happens, the contractor will then will submit the, the price that he expects that it's going to cost. And that is a maximum price. It won't exceed that. That's, that's the guarantee that you get. If there are change orders and those kinds of things, it can, it can change the scope of the project, and it might cost more that way. But as long as the, the project stays within the scope that is defined within the contract, there will not be any extra amount that the city has to pay for building these buildings.
So the amount that we're given, the $914,580, does, will that be exceeded by the time that we see this once again?
It won't be exceeded, no. That's, that's the amount that will be for the work getting started leading up to the guaranteed max. And I don't know that it will all be spent by that time. It depends on, on how much work they actually get done. Typically, that will involve things such as doing dirt work and maybe putting in, putting in footings, perhaps starting to order some of the materials.
That, I'm sorry. The amount that was listed in there included the pre-construction and then direct costs is what it was listed as. So there is a set amount for the work that will be done prior to construction actually being done. And then the rest of that was the estimate that was given to us by them in order for us to evaluate it and to score them on pricing. And so those direct costs will be used throughout the process during this multi-year contract.
And so, and then we will see that project here again?
Yes. You will see the guaranteed max because that will come back. And then you'll have the opportunity to review that and, and approve that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. John?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Well, the resolution says the mayor is authorized to execute a multi-year contract. So I don't see, once we approve this, that it can come back to us.
The, the guaranteed max comes in as a separate amendment. It's not the actual contract. It's, the, when you see the contract, and it will become available to everyone. But when you see the contract, there is no formal dollar amount. And in fact, there is reference to the guaranteed maximum price as a separate amendment. And that's designed that way. That's, it's, it's designed that, that the contract is executed and you begin, and you really don't get to the full construction phase until you have this guaranteed max. And, and at that point, then you move forward with, with the rest of the formal construction.
But the resolution says the mayor is authorized to execute a multi-year contract with this thing.
Correct. And that, and so that'll be...
That's pretty black and white. I don't see where that says it will come back to us.
When you see the contract, that's, that's, when the contract is completed, and again, that's the way these, these RFPs work, is that you, you negotiate with the contractor, and then you, you bring the, the guarantee, you sign that contract, you get started, and then at 60%, you bring back the GMP.
Well, this further says the contract shall be in accordance with terms and conditions as shall be approved by the mayor.
In terms of the initial contract, that's correct. That is not the amendment, though. That is not the GMP amendment.
Would it be possible to craft something in this resolution to indicate that second?
Yeah. If, if, if additional language is needed to...
On the face of it, it really is clear that this approves it. And I'm not necessarily against that. I was on the selection committee. But I think to answer what my colleague was saying, that, that looks, that looks black and white.
Yeah. I, I, I'm fine with making some, you know, amendment to the, to the resolution.
Perhaps you could come up with something for our voting session.
Yes.
Because we vote on this today.
You, you, if you want a minute today, you can do that.
Would it just really throw the cosmic balance out of whack if we voted next week?
Not that I know of. I, I haven't been...
We had been working very diligently, and you know, there'd been a request to pre- let the mayor pre-approve. And so I just...
Well, you see, here's the problem from my perspective. If we said we're not going to pre-approve the thing, this looks an awful lot like a pre-approval anyway. But I'm asking is, will a week's delay, adding the language John is asking about, cause a real problem?
It's just another week of delay and them working with the design team.
But it sounds like there's things proceeding already, right?
The, the work?
The work has not, the work has not started.
Is it possible you could work with Mr. Payo, I mean, you work with him anyway, but come up with some clause here that would just clarify that, that we could amend into it today? Again, I'm not trying to be delaying, but I, I think it's of interest.
Yeah. If you want to move this down on the agenda or come back to it.
Well, we come back to it later in our voting agenda. And I think we have a number of matters here. So there should be ample time if you could craft that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions anyone has, though, on the contract itself?
Jane, and then me.
You know, I concur with John. I, it's the specific language where it says the city council is willing to delegate the authority to approve and execute a contract. I think if you could amend that, the city council is willing to approve the construction manager at-risk choice and, you know, with the amended contract.
And I think we still need to show that the mayor can execute the contract. I think what needs to be added is that any mention of the guaranteed maximum price would still come back to the council.
And there's really no, the resolution doesn't even refer to the contract. It just approves the contract. It doesn't say it's even attached here too or whatever. Don't mean to be picky, but we're all lawyers here.
We didn't have a contract to attach to it. I mean, that's part of the problem.
Okay.
Glad you're here.
We'll let you come up with something there. And I do have a question for Mr. Payo, but on a side matter, but...
We'll, we'll come back in a minute. I, I have a question about, because I've heard that we're designing these, at least some of these fire stations for the capacity of six people instead of eight. Is there a reason why that is? Is that the truth that I've heard this? The, the design is for six occupants?
That's beyond my knowledge of what's...
It's, yeah, that's not my...
Well, I'd appreciate we could get an answer to that at some point here soon. Okay? All right. Any other questions for these gentlemen? All right. Rick, you are up.
Thank you again, Mr. Payo. We're keeping you busy earning your salary today. I have a question. It says that this is selected for a multi-year contract. And I'm just curious, the city, the mayor has retained a group called Project Control to oversee this, but he has only done it on a one-year contract, which means it doesn't have public review and it doesn't come before the council. How can you hire someone to oversee a project that's multi-year for a single year and bypass the city council?
I don't know if the project inspector or the organization would necessarily have to be the same over the entire five-year period of time. Why I think they're looking at is that this design, construction manager at-risk contract is not going to get built in one year. So you're approving a multi-year contract because it's going to take multi-years to do the construction. And I think we came forward with this proposal to kind of pre-approve it and authorize the mayor to sign because in construction manager at-risk, we've been utilizing pretty much a standard format that we've adopted in this, through our, our office, using AIA documents with some minor modifications. So we've been using these agreements, and they do have that guaranteed maximum price provision that comes out quite a bit late in the road down the road. So in the past, sometimes we tried to do a pre-construction contract and then come back and enter into a whole new contract to, to do the building. And it just seemed a lot simpler. And particularly, we've worked that way with the JPA sometimes is authorizing the chair of that agency to enter into those contracts at the appropriate time. But the guaranteed maximum price always came back. Now here, for PC Sports might be the overseer, as I said, that's separate and distinct then from the construction manager at-risk. That's just the mechanism the city's going to use to verify that the work is done properly. And it could be somebody else if we didn't want, want that agency after, after their contract expires.
I've kind of never heard of running an army with a general who's one year at a time. I, I just, I don't, I just don't understand why. I mean, that's, it's obviously a multi-year project. You don't want to change horses midstream. And I just, I can't understand where we're having an overseer work for a shorter contract, which basically bypasses this body in public hearing.
I don't recall if we identified the overseer by, by name in the contract or not.
The contract, then the RFP.
And the RFP. Those changes can be done by amendment to the contract. So.
Or take them out? But I, I...
You'd need to have some, you got to have a form. And as you've got to have somebody identified. So I think you do want to have identified parties that, that, just like whether it's the architect, you know, you're going to name the principal people that are the players in the agreement. But our agreement is primarily with the contractor. That's going to be houseman. That's, that's who we're dealing with. And these other entities can be, can be changed over time if so desired.
Well, it just begs credibility to say you're not going to use them for the whole project when you've got the guy building it or the entity building it and, and the superintendents or the overseers aren't there for the whole project, or you're just doing it year at a time. And which it just, it really, it looks like a way to circumvent the city council in public hearing. I mean, that's what it is. We had this issue before. So I think maybe the city attorney's office needs to assist the city council since you also represent us in seeing that we have a balance here of oversight from the legislative body and that we can represent the citizens best, and citizens can have input on whether that's appropriate or not. So, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Richard Escoville, 733 West Cummings Street. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I'm a little confused. You're trying to approve a pre-contract for $914,000 for a new fire station without a final contract. Well, this is a new fire station, so why would you approve anything? If I'm building a house, I know my final cost before I say go ahead. It doesn't make sense. Because what if they get the $914,000 in there and they say, oh, it's too high. We can't complete it within 1.5 billion. Have to go to 2 billion. You going to say no after you've already spent $914,000? That, you know, that sounds like Dumb and Dumber. So it doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
If I may, Ms., yeah. There is some validity to what Mr. Payo said in describing a construction manager at-risk. And the idea is that in return for a nebulous price or whatever, we get a, as soon as the plans are 60% completed, then they can finalize the figures. And so there's an encouragement there to...
Would you spend $914,000 to build a new apartment complex for you not knowing the final cost?
I kind of had to do that in some of my Haymarket projects, quite frankly.
No, but that, those were already built. This is brand new.
I had, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 13, approving a contract between the city and Carson Co. Global for Comprehensive Residential and Commercial Recycling Communication Education Engagement and Behavior Change Initiative for a three-year term with the option to renew for one additional three-year term.
All right. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Donna Garden. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities. And I'm here to talk to you about the City of Lincoln Recycling Education Behavior Change Campaign and the RFP and the corresponding contract that came from that. As you know, throughout the time that we talked about recycling in the last two, three years, one of the big things that have come out is that education is a huge part of that process. We've heard from many citizens, from various commercial entities, from our Haller community, that education was a main component of making a successful campaign. So we are very excited to begin this effort and be for you as a resolution approving the Comprehensive Education Behavior Change Contract. The key elements of the Recycling Education Behavior Change RFP or the Request for Proposal is listed here. It's a three-year effort. The first year is very detailed, and I think you had a fairly detailed breakdown of what was included. you had a fairly detailed breakdown of what was included in that. And each year, we have the option to change that scope and revise from what we've learned from the year before. So this goes out for three years. It addresses residential and commercial sectors, particularly in some of those areas where we do have some very big issues associated with recycling, whether it's space and commercial areas, or whether it's our home builders and how to deal with recycling materials there, or whether it's multi-sector family housing. It's data-based education behavior change strategy, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. It includes outreach and engagement with a number of different activities throughout the campaign in order to encourage and engage our citizens. It has custom branding and messaging so that we can talk about it in universal terms across the city. And of course, finally, implementation, and particularly important to evaluate how well we've done. So the request for proposals was issued on March 29th. We closed the request on May 5th. There were four firms that submitted proposals. Five-member selection committee was grouped, and three firms were interviewed on June 14th. And Carson and Company Global was selected to be the proposal that we want for our campaign moving forward. Their particular proposal enlists community-based social marketing. This is a particular way that's well-received in sustainability efforts throughout the country, to look at the barriers that we have throughout our community on why we don't recycle, and also to look at why there are areas where people love to recycle and what that brings to them, and try to make it an attractive activity and something that people want to do for the city. We would encourage us to have public participation from various groups. As I mentioned earlier, maybe from the building community, we would have a focus group from our restaurants and our bars downtown. Maybe there is another group that would address some of the issues associated with that. But we're going to get to those particular issues and make sure we understand how to address those, and so that we can have that continued engagement and sustainable recycling efforts into the future. And now to the dollars. We talked about this earlier. This is a three-year budget. It's $849,609. In the first year, we're using an NDEQ grant of $225,000, which is about 44% of that first-year budget. It's very heavily front-loaded because we have a big event happening next April when we actually ban cardboard from our landfill, and we want to make sure our population out there is well-educated, understand what they can do and how they can deal with the materials that they have. And then, of course, we have a smaller campaign, second and third year, that's shown here. And when we talked to the pre-council, there was some discussion, I think Chairman Christensen, you had a question, how do we measure success? And I think we are, this is, this is our measurement of success. We're going to stick to what we had talked about earlier. And that is, we want increased annual recycling rate to reach 32%. That's just the cardboard, and I think I mentioned numbers earlier that included the other bans as well. With just cardboard, it would be 32%. And we also have had, in our Solid Waste Management Plan 2040, since it was adopted, established goal of reducing our per-capita disposal rate, and that number is listed here. And then, of course, we're going to watch. We, since we passed the resolution on the ordinance change, we have been already putting into effect the, trying to accumulate some of that information from our hauling community. We're already getting that information in through their licensing efforts this year on how many households are subscribing to curbside recycling. So we're seeing those numbers. We'll see those before this campaign takes place, and we'll see it afterwards. We'll also be able to measure how much material is deposited at the recycling drop-off sites, and that, and see if that increases over time. And finally, I think one of the most important things about including in this price is a waste characterization study that we will do both before and after the three-year contract, so we know what's actually changing in our waste stream going to the landfill. And with that, any questions?
Questions? John?
Yes, I've been busy today, so maybe you did respond, but who were the members of the committee that selected again?
Yes, there were five members. Hang on just a minute. I know I'm on it.
You're one, okay.
Rick Hoppy, Diane Gonzalez, Ryan Hatton, and Renee, what's her last name, Jean? Reeve, Renee Reeve from Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department.
I'm sorry, from where?
Lincoln Lancaster County Health.
Okay, so four government and one private sector.
That's correct.
Okay. You have on front here this SWMP, what's Solid Waste Management Plan 2040?
Correct.
And in there, you talk about reducing disposal rate to 1,940 pounds a person next year. How did you arrive at that 1,940 pounds?
That was actually a three-year effort. I think it was a very large committee that we had that had a number of different participants. Jean was a participant in that, Jean Hanlon, our recycling coordinator. And it was a study that was done, I believe, about three years ago. We're getting ready to update that plan again. And those goals were selected at that time based on reducing the, I'm sorry, reducing the per-capita rate by a certain percentage for a period of time. And if I could ask Jean to come up, he could possibly answer that.
Jean Hanlon, recycling coordinator, 2400 Teresa Street. We did have a 20-member citizen advisory committee at that time that did this solid waste management planning effort, a broad section of the community that was involved in that. And they went through a variety of technical papers and options for alternatives for disposal, and came up with this overhaul goal of reducing by 10% the per-capita disposal rate based on the 2011 levels. But this was in 2013 that the recommendation was. So within five years, we wanted to see that drop to the 1,940 pounds by 10%. By the year 225, to have it decreased by 20%, and then by 2040, to have it decrease by 30%.
Now here it says disposal rate to 1,940 next year. So what's that, how much is that reduction?
Well, the 2000 FY 1516, per-capita disposal rate was 2,250 pounds. So, and I couldn't give you the percent decrease. And I think it's important to remember that that goal was established with the thoughts that we had five years to get there. And, you know, we just are going to be implementing this cardboard disposal ban in April. So we're well short of that five-year period to work to get to that total.
Well, I did some research into this. In 2013, on your 20-person committee, there was a lot of study, as you mentioned, on recycling and so forth. But there was about a five-minute discussion that came up with 1,940 pounds. And I'm just kind of curious how it suddenly arrived at that figure in five minutes and had all these other meetings.
Well, it was a consensus by the, by the committee that all 25 members came up with that. And quite honestly, it's, it's, it's an indicator on the per-capita disposal that's readily obtainable and can be documented, because we know what's disposed of in the Bluff Road landfill.
I'm just concerned when I found that out. Who were the other firms that submitted to the RFP?
We haven't really released that to the public yet because this hasn't been passed by resolution. I guess it's okay to go ahead. I think Bob Walla is here to make sure that I'm saying that correctly.
Mayo's stiff now.
No, we can, I think it's appropriate. I talked to Bob earlier when you asked the question, and I did send you a reply earlier. Recycle Bank, Recycle Perks. I'm going Fire.
Firespring.
Firespring, I'm sorry, and Carson and Company Global.
I've heard of Firespring. They've got a good reputation. Who is Recycle Bank and Recycle Perks?
Recycle Bank, I believe, is a New York firm that they do municipal recycling programs, and they've come to us before, and I think we've had some discussions with even some of the members of council. Recycle Perks, we hadn't heard of before until this time.
Both firms are a rewards program where they give coupons and things for people that, to people that recycle based on the volume that they recycle.
How did you come up with the, on the RFP, and I apologize for not having read it, but was there a dollar figure in there? Or did each applicant propose its own budget?
It was not. We went through the actual RFP process, graded the firms on the content of what they had, and then the actual cost did play a role in the total numbers that established which one was the leading candidate, so to speak. So that did weigh into the overall decision on which one's firm moved forward.
Okay. Jane?
I was hoping you could address a couple of items. Could you talk about how the group is planning on reaching out to our low-income elderly in the community to make it accessible and affordable for them? And the other question is, how will you be able to document the pricing structure from the private haulers so that the people in the community might have an option and a choice of pricing to make sure that they get the best deal possible?
Could I ask Jamie Carson to come to the dais and speak a moment about that? I'd like to introduce Jamie Carson from Carson and Company Global.
Greetings, council, and thank you for your time today. My name is Jamie Carson. It's 2124 Y Street here in Lincoln. And Jane, you had asked about the helping the elderly. One component of the campaign is multilingual and multicultural. So that will, that's one thing that I wanted to note. We will be hosting focus groups to work directly with those groups, and, and really manage barrier research to determine what are potential holdbacks to beginning to recycle. We'll take that same approach with elderly or other groups through the work that we do with centers here in Lincoln.
And then making the pricing data available for the consumers in the community so that they know that they're getting a fair deal.
One of the primary goals of the campaign is really promoting new subscribers to curbside recycling. So anything that we can do to work with recycling collectors and processors to make their rates available, we'll be working directly with them as well as the city, and any information that's public, we can aggregate that on either a portal or information on recycle lincoln dot NE dot gov. So we'll be doing all that we can to make this a simple process for residents here in the city.
Benny?
Yes, thank you, ladies, for coming. I've heard from a few constituents, a few residents about the cost. And I want to, we've talked about these things for a couple of years now. I think the previous council discussed it. Has there been an increase or a change in the original figures we talked about?
You're talking about the cost of the campaign?
Cost of the campaign, yes.
We actually have appropriated, both in this budget cycle and the previous budget cycle, $700,000 total for this campaign. And with the grant that we have, I believe we're under that now with the 600-some-odd figure that we have. So that was appropriated. That money is already included in our budgets that we have now. So it's available.
So there were no real changes in the original proposal voted on last year by the, this is not an increase in new money?
No, it is not.
Okay. John?
Well, I'd like to follow what Benny said in, I'm sorry.
No.
Anyway, you know, even though we did budget it, but is that a reason to spend it? Even if you're not spending all of it, and a lot of this came about when there was no recycling, the idea to recycle, to do people. But I know my phone's been ringing off the hook from people saying, wow, $850,000. I had a question for you. On the material you showed there too, you called the City of Lincoln Recycling Education and Behavior Change Campaign. Why use the phrase "behavior change"?
Well, we're trying to instill, and Jamie can help me out here too, but what we're trying to instill is natural change in how you do life. If it becomes a habit for you, we want it to become a habit for you to recycle your materials. So that sometimes takes a behavior change in order to do that. And once you start, like, I know my husband, once he started recycling, he tries to recycle just about everything. So that's where, we want to make sure we're doing it right, and that we're making those, those good behaviors.
And I'm all for recycling, but the cost, I was reminded of George Orwell. I'm sure you read 1984, and it was, Big Brother is watching you. And I just, that behavioral change kind of hit me the wrong way, that you're going to, government's watching us and telling us what to do. So, thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you. Following up on the behavioral change aspect, I am really surprised that those folks that were reward-based weren't more prominent, or we didn't see them come up to the dais, because I think that if you're looking at behavior change, obviously offering a reward to people seems to really good, be a really good marketing tool. And so I was a little, I was a little surprised and dismayed by that. But I also did notice that in the, in the contract package we got, there was evidently additional, there was a need for additional employees by the contractor. And so I was also surprised to see that. When we did, was there a change in the scope of the work from the time that the RFP was put out until the time that this contract was entered into, and they realized they had to hire new personnel? Or can you kind of explain that?
I don't think there's a change in scope. What we did was shift where that emphasis was. We wanted it in the first year because we knew that's where we wanted to make sure that the program was implemented appropriately for that cardboard ban that was going to take place in April. So there may have been some shift to the first year versus the second and third year.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question here. So, we're going to ask people to do something different. And there's, whenever you do that kind of thing in a public campaign, there is a call to action. And I'm just curious, what media will you use for your call to action?
Sure. And I actually, if it's okay, may I invite Kim Morrow up as well to talk? There's been a, Kim Morrow is, is one of the leads with Verdis Group, who is really an equal partner with us on this campaign. We're also partnering with Nebraska Recycling Council to have all of that expertise on the table. And you had asked a few questions about the behavior change aspect. Really, one of the primary requests out of the RFP was driving the program through community-based social marketing, which, as Donna mentioned, that's prevalent and well-accepted in the sustainability world and in a lot of urban campaigns. And one of the reasons that we've partnered with Verdis Group is their expertise in CBSM. So I think it would be helpful, too, if Kim explained the CBSM methodologies and the process that's behind that.
Sure. I'll just say a couple of words about it. But I understand your concern about the notion of behavior change and Big Brother, but it's actually a technical term that refers to this body of work. So across the country, well, actually around the world, there are efforts afoot that might be, for example, efforts to preserve rhinoceros habitat, or efforts to conserve water in California during their drought, or getting people to turn off light switches to save energy. And what has happened over the last 10 or so years is a whole new field has merged. Basically, the field of environmental studies has merged with social psychology. So there's a whole new field of conservation psychology, which looks at how do you encourage people or communities to actually adopt more environmentally-friendly behaviors. This research partly comes out of the health field, like when researchers have worked with people to get them to stop smoking, or take other, adopt more healthy behaviors. So there is a psychology to it, and part of the reason why that's interesting to people is because it's an alternative to mandates and legislating behavior change. It's more of a social psychological approach to encouraging behavior change on a community scale.
So my question still is, what media will you use to communicate with these, with everybody in Lincoln to get them to do something different? Is it going to be TV, radio, newspaper, social media? What's it going to be? Where's the emphasis going to lie?
Traditional advertising is a primary component of Task Three, which is really strategy implementation. So the, just backing up very quickly, CBSM, the program would begin with barrier and benefit research, led by Verdis Group, co-led with our two teams. That would help to lead to developing the timeline and strategy selection. And strategy implementation would be those traditional mediums. So TV airtime, being present at a community event, being out in the community, either hosting a booth at events where there's high traffic and you have the opportunity to have conversations, or presentations at civic groups. There's also, as I mentioned, the multilingual and multicultural component built into it, and a number of opportunities for touchpoints across the community. So when the campaign is public, I wanted to also mention that the behavior change aspect will not be a part of necessarily the message. We will We will have a very holistic, as Kim mentioned, approach to working with the community and making this really a community-driven campaign. So following on, we led the Be a Recycling Champion campaign, so it could very likely continue on with that core message.
Okay. About $850,000, how much of that do you envision being spent directly on the marketing component?
There, the Task Three is strategy implementation, and that's the primary portion of the budget. The traditional media costs total around the $40,000, $50,000 mark, and that would just be for media buys. So that will be significantly out in the community, but that does not include the community engagement component. So PowerPoint presentations and being present.
Out of $850,000, $50,000 would be the marketing budget?
That's what's currently designated, but--
Well, $850,000 is not the year-one budget.
No, but it's the total.
Right.
But we're being asked to reprove.
And so the strategy selection really would be driven by those early conversations with the focus groups and the barrier benefit research, and in making decisions with the city on where to implement really the outreach.
I can tell you from personal experience, $50,000 doesn't do a lot of messaging.
A couple of comments on that. We do have our CIC, Diane Gonzalez will be doing some of the producing for our video and various other spots that we have. And I do believe that what Jamie's talking about there is just the airtime. She's not talking about development of that material or anything of that nature, so that's additional costs. I think the direct costs were more in terms of the total contract that we developed there. We gave, there was a split between, it was 62% indirect or consultant time and about 30-some percent?
So there are costs, there are costs beyond the $850,000 involved that we'll be dedicating city staff time to, correct?
We do have some time from our--
And do we know how much that's going to be?
I don't think that's included in this at the moment.
Okay, but that's a direct cost to the taxpayers. Now, that'd be useful information to have. If you could get that to us, I'd appreciate it. Other questions?
I think you may have misspoken. You've got this Fives Task that you had sent me, Donna. And in their Task Three, it says you're going to have a total of $260,000. Now, this is all in that first year. But of that, $150,000 would go to the consultants, and then it says $108,000 for direct costs for print, residential, commercial, direct mail to residence, airtime, billboard, bus hauler materials.
Yes, that's correct. That was the split directly from the breakdown that was provided with the RFP.
But now you're saying $50,000.
I think Jamie was talking strictly about airtime buys.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Robert Way. I live at 801 Elavato Avenue in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm sorry, I just became aware of this issue this morning when it was on the front page and, like, people have been calling into Councilman Camp. That was a big number. So I did the little research I could since I saw it, and I'd like to direct the council to Page Three of the education, recycling education program, which was included right after the spreadsheet you just held up, Councilman Camp.
Go ahead. This one?
No, the spreadsheet with the colored. Well, I'll trust the council to check this later, but under strategy selection, there is Item B, direct mail appeals to single-family residences, and direct mail appeals to multifamily residents and owners. So I'm not quite sure I understand all this marketing technology, but are we going to be sending people mail to encourage them to recycle more? This is, I think the city was taken aback by this number. I would encourage the council to table this for a week. I think there's a lot of questions that I wasn't able to get to because I was at work all day, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify?
Richard Escobal, 733 West Cummings. I guess it's the accountant in me. I don't understand. Three-year contract, $850,000. That represents over three years, 153 work weeks, because there's six days a year for vacation. And that means we're paying these people $5,555.56 every week of our tax dollars. Now, I want a finder's fee. First of all, they're saying they're trying to get down to 1,940 pounds. For a two-person household, that's 74.6 pounds a week. For a four-person household, that's 149.2 pounds a week, because it's per person, per, you know. Now, you have implemented that we have to recycle cardboard. Now, my, I personally have never recycled, but we got a hair in our butt about a couple of years ago and said, ding, let's recycle paper. Now, you, I've been recycling magazines, mail, newspapers, advertisements, everything. And if I can come up with, my wife and I can come up with 74 pounds a week now. Whereas I, excuse me, it's a 10-pound bag, twice a week for me. And that's counting tin, I mean aluminum cans and dirty paper and stuff like that. So I want a finder's fee. And I can sell this for at least 10%. I'll take, I won't be greedy. Tell everyone to recycle paper. Like you said, you're sending them a letter. How much weight is in paper products, newspapers, magazines, catalogs? That is a good 70% of the weight for all garbage. This cardboard thing is a big joke. You know, how much people, how many people get cardboard anymore? So you recycle cardboard. How much cardboard do they get? Take a box home from Russ's IGA with your groceries in it, or a paper sack. You know, what are they, those weigh? That's not going to save diddly. But if you put it in the recycling, to recycle paper, even mix paper, you don't need all this garbage. I just asking some of the school people here. This $850,000 has got me mind-boggling because I think John mentioned that there was a study in 2013 on recycling.
There was a committee.
Committee, okay. It costs an average of $9,679 per student for 13 years to go through school, public school. Per year. But that's 13 years, and these are uneducated people that we have to educate and give them good knowledge, I hope. $855,000 for behavioral change, recycling? How much behavioral change did you put out when you said recycle, you're going to have to recycle cardboard? None, zero. You know, it just came up. Boom, well, recycle paper. Now, how much is that going to cost the city? So this whole idea is pretty ridiculous for, even if it's a Nebraska company. You know, I, I'll take 10%. That's only $85,000, so.
One minute.
That's my point of view on this recycling.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Escobal? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify?
Good evening. Yeah, Rob Roy Saws, 6728 Star, Lincoln, Nebraska, Bethany area. Well, that's about almost 300 grand a year. Is there any chance to slip my contract in at this date? Because I wouldn't mind wetting my beak in that kind of gravy. I think, I wouldn't mind having a little piece of that. And I'm sure it might be useful and educational and, but it seemed like an awful lot of money for something that maybe even has been done already, things that are self-evident, that can be done through current channels. I think we had a survey from the mayor that was put out for different input that included a lot of this. And the other thing is, I know a little bit about basic psychology. You have a carrot and a stick. If you want somebody to have their behavior changed, or you've got a dog that you're training, you might have the carrot, you might have the stick. It might be a dog biscuit or a treat. I prefer the treat, the reward. I think you should put the public, give them a little skin in the game, take this money, put a, start paying them. Pay them for different things. Pay them for cardboard. You'll have guys picking it up tomorrow. They come around my place and they pick up scrap metal, go through the trash, you know. I don't think we really have to have three years of studying basic behavior. The people that want to recycle, they are. We already paid for a city dump. I'll pay for another one. I put out, I don't know how many pounds they had to begin with per person, but if they're looking for a target of 1,940 pounds, I put out, two of us, one small bag of garbage a week, probably 10 pounds, 12 pounds, once a week, times 52, 260 pounds for myself at five pounds, 520. Somebody's throwing away a lot of rocks and metal, or they're throwing a lot of garbage away that's coming off me. Maybe they should study what's really going out to the dump, because I've been out to the dump many times over the years, and it's a pretty interesting place. If you've never been to the dump, you've missed something. Because it's a, it's a part of life that most people don't see. And it can be a little smelly, but it's not all that bad. Maybe they could do a centralized recycling effort there at the dump, sorting, grinding it up, burning it, using it. I hear Sioux City is burning waste and probably capturing whatever emissions and using it to generate electricity. I know we put in a lot of methane pipeline and feeding it over to the gas plant out there at pretty considerable cost, but hopefully a good thing overall in the long run. And I'd like to see them maybe make an effort towards--
One minute.
Trying to make reusable packaging coming from the sources that are coming from outside the community. People that are shipping to some of the big companies that maybe have a lot of cardboard, they could use, you know, reusable deposit plastic crates, whatever. But mostly, I'd like to see a little reward and the money maybe be used in a, what I feel may be a more productive manner. And I believe we're kind of doing what they want to do already, anyway.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify?
Hello, members of the council. Jesse Storita, 3005 South 19th. Keep this very brief. This is basically a character witness. I've gotten to know Jamie Carson pretty well over the past few years, and I just want to say that she's a civic leader, an environmental champion, a business innovator, a mother, a social entrepreneur, and probably another 30 adjectives, all superlatives, that I don't want to take up time listing. But the point that I really want to make is that if you have done anything in Lincoln in the last few years that relates to the environment, and I really mean anything, Jamie has been involved or has led these initiatives in some way. So she has the expertise, the understanding, and the insights that gained from those experiences, I think, are directly transferable to this grant. So as you think about this, just something to bear in mind, and thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? Next item, please.
All right. Next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call Items 14 and 15 together. They are amending Section 10.14.260 to provide specifically for a school-related speed zone on 84th Street and repealing Section 10.14.260 of the Lincoln municipal code as hitherto existing, and a resolution in support of a school-related speed zone on 84th Street and the appropriation of $150,000 from miscellaneous budget contingency to safety and operation improvement program to fund the creation and installation.
Well, this is for many people here, the main event. So who would like to speak in favor of this item? Please come forward. Just, we've got, somebody's got to be first, so.
I would gladly go first. Oh, gosh. Let me stretch for a minute. I don't know what the greater feat is. Sorry, my name is Travis Langemeyer. Address is 8801 Colby Street. I don't know what the greater feat is, getting my son to sit still and quietly for an hour, hour and a half, getting a brother and sister to sit side by side for that long, or getting our city to put in a much-needed school zone where one is surely needed. So today, let me start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and to speak to all of you today. And secondly, thank you all for volunteering to be public servants and be good stewards of our community. In this day and age where partisan politics seems to be running rampant, I'm sure it is very difficult to maintain a nonpartisan body and get it to function smoothly all the time. So I applaud all of you for your efforts and the things that you do on a daily basis to make this community great. Today, I show up as the voice of not only myself, but the voice of nearly 900 other citizens in northeast Lincoln and across Lincoln. Most of these came from northeast Lincoln. I have 850-plus signatures here. I will count them a couple of times. I'm sure my counts are off a little bit, but I would like to submit these or admit these for the record, if I may.
Please just give them to the clerk.
Six years ago, six years ago, I started upon this journey to get a school zone put in at 84th and 80th. When my son was in kindergarten, Cahoe was under construction or renovation, and they bused the students out to Abbott Sports Complex. When he was in first grade, I have the luxury of being able to drop my children off at school and pick them up. Small business owner here in Lincoln, it makes my schedule a lot more flexible for me to do that, and I enjoy that time with my kids. That first day, I dropped my son off at first grade. I witnessed firsthand the chaos that is the traffic situation around Cahoe Elementary. As I became actively involved with the PTO for Cahoe Elementary, it was a constant and ongoing discussion that we had at every meeting, what we could do to alleviate the traffic situation around Cahoe. There were many mornings when I would drop my child off and later my children, as my daughter, entered Cahoe. As a parent, your paternal instinct extends well beyond your-- As a parent, your paternal instinct extends well beyond your own kids. And when you're sitting in your vehicle waiting for your kid to hop out and partake in an active day of school, and you see other kids darting about and the traffic that is just senseless around Cahoe, and you see all these kids that are putting themselves in harm's way as they're just trying to commute to class. And this is on the west side of eighty-fourth Street, nearby the school. I started this process thinking, okay, there's got to be something that can be done to help alleviate some of that traffic around Cahoe. So I took it upon myself to reach out to the mayor's office. Actually spoke to Mayor Byler personally at a Rotary event, I believe, at one point, was passed along to his many staff members and kind of got bounced from staff member to staff member. We had several meetings. I had the joy of discussing the issue with our city engineers to see what could be done about this. Over the years, we've had countless meetings.
One minute.
That seems really fast.
Yeah, I'll request a little more time. Over the years, we've had many meetings, and some of the results of those meetings that we've had, we have been told that there's not enough potential pedestrians or rooftops east of eighty-fourth Street to warrant a school zone. Even though the city engineer's office loves to hide behind what they call standards, every time we asked at these meetings what quantifies a significant number of rooftops or potential pedestrians that would cross eighty-fourth Street to get to Cahoe Elementary, we were never given a solid number on that. Surely if we have standards, there would be a number in place to which if we hit, voila, school zone would be there. We were never given that number. Another excuse we were given, and this was at our most recent meeting, a few months ago actually, where Lonnie Berkland stated that
Time. Are there questions?
If we had forty mile an hour speed zone through there, this would be a non-issue.
So you've run out of time, so I have to, I want to ask you a question, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. So you were talking about some of the meetings, and you're talking about the limits in the school zones. I want to ask you, there have been some reports of numbers. You said you take your children to school and pick them up every day, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and do you see other children from the area using the crosswalk to cross eighty-fourth Street on Layton?
Many days, I see children trying to get across that street. And there have been numerous times where I have thought to myself, my God, I'm going to have to use my own vehicle to shield these children just so they can get across that street and put my vehicle out there just to stop oncoming traffic so they can safely cross eighty-fourth Street and make it to school.
And so why do you take your children to and from school?
Because these two faces here are the most important thing in my world, and I am not about to sacrifice either one of them because our city is too lazy to do something about that intersection.
You don't feel the intersection safer than to cross?
No, ma'am, I do not. So in two thousand eight, we did not have a stoplight at that intersection, probably due to standards. And then we had a fatality at that intersection. Shortly thereafter, discretion was used by the city engineer's office, and lo and behold, we have a stoplight at that intersection.
Can I ask you, for one moment, I'd like to take you back to the discussion you had around Cahoe. My understanding is there have been some incidents over there involving the schoolchildren because of the increase in traffic.
Correct. We have seen our student population increase dramatically over the last handful of years. Two years ago, when we had serious discussions with the city engineer's office, we had a hundred and twenty-five students out of a little over five hundred that were east of eighty-fourth Street. We now have a hundred and ninety-five students, a third of our student body population for Cahoe Elementary, that are on the east side of eighty-fourth Street. This compounds the problem around Cahoe Elementary because of people like myself that refuse to let their children, who could easily walk or ride their bike to school, commute in such a fashion. Therefore, we drive our children to school. And as that number of students on the east side of eighty-fourth has grown, so too is the number of cars around Cahoe because you have more parents from the east side of eighty-fourth Street driving their kids to school. That creates cause and concern for the parents that live on the west side of eighty-fourth because they see this increase in traffic, and now they feel their children are unsafe. Last year, we had three hit-and-run accidents around Cahoe as a result of this increased traffic. LPD was great. They captured one of the three.
Can you, do you know the figures for the number of students crossing eighty-fourth in the south part of town at those school zones?
I'm glad you asked that, Cindy. We have an elementary school that is very similar to Cahoe on the south side of eighty-fourth Street, Pertle Elementary. It is six blocks west of eighty-fourth Street. They have fifty-five kids on the east side of eighty-fourth Street, fifty-five. Two years ago, when we requested the city put in a school zone at eighty-fourth and Layton, we were told we didn't have enough potential pedestrians or rooftops. At that point, we had a hundred and twenty-five kids.
I think that you, you brought a graphic, and I'm going to go ahead and pass that out to the council. I think that maybe I
This is the one you're thinking? Can Jane have a question here?
Mr. Langley, if, if there were a safety district added on eighty-fourth, would you still let your, would you let your children ride their bike to school knowing that they'd have to cross eighty-fourth Street?
If the speed limit were dropped to forty mile an hour and we had a school zone put in there, sorry, I would definitely let them cross eighty-fourth Street. I know there are many parents in the neighborhood that have said the same thing. We have a growing, a growing population on the east side of eighty-fourth Street. There are a ton of kids in that neighborhood. One of the things I love the most about summer is being able to open the windows and hear all the laughter of the kids playing in the yards. Many of them are good friends, and many of them would travel in packs and ride their bikes or walk to and from school in groups. That intersection, I'm six foot three, I run over a hundred miles a month. I tried crossing that intersection last week. I did exactly what I tell my children to do. I pushed the button. I waited for the, the red light to stop the traffic at eighty-fourth Street. I waited until I knew all four lanes of traffic were going to stop. I waved at everybody to make sure they weren't looking at their phone, but they were looking up, and I saw eyeballs. And as I about stepped off the curb, I almost got taken out by a vehicle turning north onto eighty-fourth Street. There was some confusion there because there's not a delayed green on that, on either light there. And so the driver thought I was waiting for her. I wasn't. I stepped off, created some issues there. In that situation, six foot three, long stride, long legs, I barely made it to that opposing curb on the west side of eighty-fourth Street before traffic started up again. Now, when you have four, five, six, seven kids trying to cross that, without the delayed green, with four lanes of traffic, plus the median, plus the turning lane, it is not a safe intersection at all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, your time and preparation. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
My name is Ann Langemeyer, eighty-eight oh one, Colby Street. I would just like to read some information from the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. Public Works has said that having a school zone here would be less safe. How does that even make sense when studies show that lower speeds reduce chances of pedestrian accidents and severity of industries, injuries if accidents occur? Based on data provided from the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration, the likelihood of fatality is decreased in a pedestrian accident at lower rates of speed. Reductions in vehicle speed can have a very significant influence on pedestrian crashes and injuries. Pedestrians suffer much more serious injuries when struck by high-speed vehicles than when struck by vehicles going more slowly. Also, any pedestrian crashes would be prevented entirely had the vehicles been driving more slowly, since driver and pedestrian would have more time to perceive the threat and react to the risk averting the crash altogether. Traditional approaches built around speed limits, public information, and education, and highly visible enforcement have been used to control vehicle speeds and directly or indirectly to increase safety for pedestrians. These approaches are most often used for higher-speed roadways in order to reduce vehicle-only crashes, but enforcement-based efforts have been targeted at school zones and other sites with at-risk pedestrians. Foremost is that, once implemented, they are effective without constant attention such as enforcement, and can be placed in areas where regular enforcement could never be afforded. Also, they require little maintenance, so engineering changes can be implemented as funding is available without placing burdens on future budgets. Studies have shown that activation of school zone caused drivers to significantly and persistently reduce their speeds. The chances of a child being hit at a higher, are higher at this intersection without a speed zone. The injuries if hit are more severe and likely fatal based on current speeds. That's why parents are so terrified to let their kids cross at eighty-fourth and Layton. We are asking the council pass this resolution to give our kids the safe passage that we as, and we have as parents, the peace of mind. A nineteen ninety-nine Highway Traffic and Safety Administration study found that five percent of pedestrians are fatally injured when struck by a vehicle traveling at twenty-five miles or less. This compares with the fatality rates of forty, eighty, and nearly a hundred percent when the pedestrian is struck at thirty, forty, and fifty miles or more, respectfully. Young students need slower speeds in school zones because children do not have the same abilities as adults in, number one, seeing and evaluating traffic conditions because of their height. I know what it's like, too. Processing information because of their limited peripheral vision and visual acuity, perceiving correctly the direction and sound of traffic, and understanding the use of traffic control devices and crosswalks. At speeds of forty-six plus miles per hour, the proportion of fatalities for pedestrians between fifteen and forty-four years of age increases sharply, while it drops somewhat for younger pedestrians, reflecting different exposure patterns on the highest-speed roadways. And that's because younger pedestrians are most often found on the lower-speed roads. We've been asked several times, why, why put this in when no one crosses the road already? Well, that's kind of the chicken and egg scenario here. We as parents are not going to allow our children to be put in that unsafe environment. So when taken together, all this crash data strongly does support the relationship that higher speeds for vehicles and striking pedestrians result in more serious consequences. And again, as a parent, that's not something that I am willing to risk the lives of my children. Next, I would like to read a letter from Dennis Martin. He is the principal at Saint John the Apostle School. To whom it may concern, I am writing on behalf of parents, students, staff, and local community to support the efforts to provide a crosswalk on eighty-fourth Street. Several of our families use this intersection as a means to walk or ride bikes to school. This does not include the residents in the area whose children use this crossing to attend other schools in the area and the vast amount of children that cross this location to get to Swimming Pool in the summer. The number of children that will need to cross eighty-fourth Street, or for school or any other reason, will be increasing as this area continues to develop. Several years ago, when the city was revamping Holdridge, I tried to work with the city to make a safe pedestrian and bike crossing at Carlos as a part of our safe route to school. The paving project is now complete, and as anticipated, the traffic flow at the speed at which cars are traveling have increased, making it more dangerous for those children to cross the street. Besides that, there is still a blind spot in which smaller children are not able to see the cars at the bottom of the hill. After several months of communication with the city, they did install flashing signal for crossing Holdridge. We are still waiting for that flashing signal to turn to an actual stoplight as promised. I hope the city does not delay in securing a crosswalk for eighty-fourth Street. With the amount of traffic and the speed of cars on eighty-fourth Street, it definitely warrants a crossing signal. I'm including a small portion of the correspondence with the city concerning the Carlos.
Other questions for Ms. Langemeyer?
Did you finish your sentence? I don't remember.
I just stopped when the beep went off.
Could you please finish your sentence?
He's including a small portion of the correspondence with the city concerning the Carlos and Holdridge crossing. It may help your decision.
Will you be providing that to the clerk then?
Yes, I sure can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you, and good evening to my friends on the city council, and thank you for this opportunity to address you. I am Kathy Danik, forty-two sixty-one Knox Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I serve on the Lincoln Board of Education. The comments I share with you today are my own and do not reflect the opinions or actions of the Lincoln Board of Education. Lincoln is a vibrant and growing community in all four quadrants of our city. I think that's a very good thing. We can drive anywhere in this city and see new housing, apartments, and businesses cropping up. Children in all parts of Lincoln are fortunate. They have the ability to walk, not just in their neighborhoods, but to school, because we believe in strong neighborhoods. But we are also experiencing growing pains. Neighborhoods are growing on both sides of arterials, and we need to respond to the needs of the families as they walk back and forth around our community. I am a lifelong resident of northeast Lincoln, a place where many appreciate the feel of a small town. In the seventies, eighty-fourth Street was a rarely-traveled two-lane road. Many of us viewed it as the end of civilization at the time. Today, rooftops and businesses line the busy four-lane roadway. I'm here today to ask you to support the addition of a twenty-five mile an hour school zone for the crossing at eighty-fourth and Layton, and to consider changing the speed limit to forty miles per hour on eighty-fourth Street from Adams to Holdridge. For me personally, I understand the impact of slowing traffic, and it is this personal story I share with you today. In two thousand eight, my granddaughter was nine years old. She had just turned nine years old and was hit by a car traveling twenty-five miles an hour. She was thrown twenty feet, ambulanced from her home in York to Lincoln, and spent five days in the hospital with a major concussion. Had that car been going faster, the chances of her survival would have been diminished immensely. That young lady graduated from high school today, and I am grateful every day that she survived a horrific accident. I recognize that a school zone is not a perfect solution, but it is cost-effective, and more importantly, it will slow people down as they approach the crossing, where one hundred ninety-five children add to the Cahoe Elementary population. I implore each of you to consider adding a school, school zone to this neighborhood. They work well all over Lincoln, on streets like Pine Lake, Old Chaney, Vine Street, Forty-Eighth, Twenty-seventh, and two others on eighty-fourth South of O near Pertle Elementary, Messiah Lucian, I could go on to there, and Adams Street, they are on Superior Street. I hope you support this and keep our children safe as they walk to and from school. Thank you. And I did bring copies. I gave one to Mr. Christensen earlier, and there are copies for the rest of you.
Okay, are there questions for Kathy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matt Schulte. I too serve on the Lincoln Board of Education, and I'm just here sharing for myself. You know, everyone in Lincoln plays a unique role in educating our kids, librarians, volunteers, community members. Today, you guys get a unique opportunity to play a role in the education of our kids by providing a safe passageway for kids to get to school. You see, we know that the only way we can educate a kid is when they arrive there safely, and this is a neat opportunity for us to do that. I tend to be a very logical decision-maker when I make decisions, and so I, I asked LPS, how many kids do we have that actually go to schools? And so I provided here just a series of maps for you guys that show that there are, where the hundred and ninety-four kids live, as well as, if you, if we want to put that on, we can do that, each of the other schools along east of eighty-fourth Street as well. So you can see that there really are a hundred and ninety-five. I oftentimes wonder when I hear numbers thrown out to me, are there actually a hundred and ninety kids? Yes, there are, and this is where they live. Each dot indicates a household where children live. The second map I provided for you as well shows Pertle Elementary School, where currently we have forty-five kids, and that's where the, this, the safe, the safety zone currently exists. The third map, which is close to my heart, which is where my kids go, is Maxi Elementary School. Maxi Elementary is lucky that we have a, and I marked it on that map there for you, a bike path that goes right underneath eighty-fourth Street, allowing for perfectly safe passage. You don't even have to cross the street there. And finally, just, this is, this is a map that shows every single school that has kids that live east of eighty-fourth Street and has the total numbers at the bottom. So you can see that Cahoe is very unique compared to other schools along eighty-fourth Street, has significantly more children, more than almost twice as many as Maxi Elementary, which is second, for, second. The number of students in Maxi is dropping as we've recently opened a new school called Clefcorn. But I just want to encourage you guys, not only to help provide for the safety of our kids, but as you just look at this map, I think you'll see the clear need for a safety zone near Cahoe Elementary.
Thank you. Are there questions? Thank you.
Can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Kathy Danik and Matt Schulte for coming tonight from LPS School Board. It's always good to have other members and leaders in the community supporting our efforts here, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mandy Moore, eighty-eight ten Eagleton Lane. I just have a few letters written on behalf of people who couldn't be here today from Dr. Andrew Butzke, doctor chiropractor at Spine and Sports Chiropractic. There are certain things that we know. The body was meant for motion, and a sitting body is not only shutting down on the outside, but on the inside as well. The availability for kids to sit and be entertained is increasing, which means less are moving physically and mentally. Sitting causes several things to occur in the body. Poor posture increases with sitting, weakness in both postural muscles and lower body muscles, less calories to be burned, and things meant to burn fat become less effective, compression of the digestive system leading to decreased absorption of vitamins and minerals, increased risk for depression, decreased bone strength. Childhood obesity tends to be continued into the adult years. Obesity in both can lead to sleep apnea, depression, and diabetes. This can all be counteracted by giving kids the chance to safely bike or walk to school. When people or kids are active, confidence goes up. The body's internal environment is active, and health risks go down. Kids are texting and sitting all day in school. This should not be continued at home, but sadly it is. As a chiropractor, I have seen a trend towards standing desks at work for employees. Adults and employers know the poor impact sitting has on our internal health, muscle joints, and bones. It's time for us to start thinking about our kids as well. A healthy lifestyle should be started early in life, not learned halfway through it. Dr. Andrew Butzke. Another parent letter. My name is Carrie Wilber, and I'm the mother to four children who all have attended Cahoe Elementary, with two who currently still attend. I'm writing this letter because I feel passionate about the unsafe conditions at the intersection of eighty-fourth Street in Leighton. We moved into our home in Harrison Heights in two thousand and nine. Our oldest daughter was in second grade at Cahoe, oldest son was starting kindergarten at Cahoe, youngest was enrolled at preschool at Faith Lutheran, and I was almost full-term with our then-unborn youngest daughter. We knew eighty-fourth Street was dangerous when we moved into our home, but I underestimated my kiddo's desire to walk or ride bikes to school. My husband and I were fortunate and had flexible schedules, and with the help of my mom and other neighboring moms, all four children had rides to and from school each day. As our children grew, the request to walk or ride their bikes to school became more persistent and never went away. Allowing the children to walk or ride their bikes to school on their own was something I could not give into. Working in healthcare, I saw firsthand the consequences of the unsafe situations. On my way to work over the years, I had witnessed semi-sliding through the intersection, countless automobiles running the red lights, speeding vehicles, and even a fatality. We recently moved out of Harrison Heights earlier this month, and one of the first things my son mentioned was to me, "Mom, now I can ride my bike to school." He'll be in eighth grade in his last year of middle school. He's been crossing Seventy-eighth Street for two years now, because I feel the conditions are safer due to the reduced speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour before and after school. With our recent move to the other side of eighty-fourth, he knows I will agree to him riding his bike to school because he no longer needs to cross eighty-fourth. We live in an age where it seems children would rather play on the internet and all sorts of phone apps and games than to ride their bikes and play outside, and one of the first comments my son made to me after we moved a few weeks was about riding his bike to school. This comment emphasizes how important this is to him. Riding your bike to school shouldn't be a privilege; it should be a child's right. I urge each of you to consider the safety of children who live in the area and must cross eighty-fourth Street to attend school. Let's work together to keep them safe. They're counting on us. Thank you for listening to my story. Dear Ms. Lamb, I saw the news article concerning...concerning the crosswalk at eighty-fourth and Leighton Streets in Lincoln. I...and I'm trying to find out how to sign the petition regarding the change, but I'm unable to attend the City Council meeting for public discussion on this issue. I hope my following input might be useful. I don't know if I should continue, because it's quite a long letter, but...
Could you tell me, how many letters do you have?
I have four here.
Okay. Would you be willing to give those to the clerk, so we can put them in the public record?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions for Ms. Moore?
Very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify?
Hello, I'm Dr. Bob Rowner, R-A-U-N-E-R, addresses fifty-one hundred Valley Road, and I'm president of Partnership Felty Lincoln. I'm testifying on behalf of the medical community. Mainly, the reason we're testifying is supporters. I think this is something that's an issue that's necessary for the health and safety of our kids. One of the main efforts to get kids more fit is getting more of them walking to school again. When you and I were kids, most of us walked to school. Now, we're down to about ten to twenty percent of kids walking to school, and a lot of it's...you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. One of them literally is a safety issue. And so if we want to get kids more walking to school, we have to figure out what the safety issues are. And I think as Lincoln continues to grow and expand and attendance areas rearrange, we have to get the city to work a little more collaboratively with the school districts and the parents to figure out what are those routes to school. I could provide numerous other examples, even my own neighborhood, where some rerouting happened, and now what was a safe route to school no longer is. An example I would use is on Cotton and Fifty-six, if you're between the Lefler and East neighborhoods, for example. And so this is something I think we need to focus on. Also, keep in mind, there is a cost to this, of course, but I think people forget about the other side of the cost. The reason we have such an epidemic of diabetes in the United States right now is a lack of physical activity, and we need to start when they're young. Those behaviors need to happen when we're kids, not...it's hard to change that when people are adults, and so this is a habit that has to start young. An example I often use is that the cost of diabetes to our local employers is more than what they pay in property taxes every year. That's the scale of healthcare costs and just diabetes alone, and the biggest single thing you can do to prevent diabetes is more physical activity, and we need to start that with our kids. And so with that, I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Cindy?
Dr. Rowner, I believe you have...do you have your handout with you?
No, I emailed it, I thought.
Okay, yeah, so I have a copy, and what I'm wondering is, each of the council members have a copy, but I'm wondering if I could have a copy for you to put up on the elbow there? Someone has one for you? Great.
Yeah, this, I think partly that we presented this, the health statistics to the school board last week, and one of the things we discussed is that we've made a lot of progress in making our kids fit in middle school, but we've not made that progress in elementary school. And one thing has to do with P.E. time, but another thing actually is frankly, more parents are safe...feel safe letting their kids walk to school in middle school, but they don't feel that way in elementary school for a lot of reasons. The kids are littler, there's other issues, but I think one of those areas, you can get...well, the recommended sixty minutes of physical activity, you could get fifteen to thirty minutes of easy of it just for walking back and forth to school. And so that's why this is actually partly related to that. The other thing we focus on in the schools is we've got data every year, pretty much run, that shows the kids are more fit, do better in math, reading, and science, and that's proven over and over again. So that's kind of the summary of that.
So I think I was intrigued by that. What you're saying is that the more...better fitness is tied to academic performance?
Yep. It's been shown repeatedly, and that's LPS data. We run it multiple years in a row. You see the same thing every year.
And it would be helpful if kids could be walking and biking fifteen to thirty minutes before school?
Yes.
That would help your figures improve, like you have in the upper school grades? Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Would anyone else like to testify? Please come forward. Just jump right up and come on down.
My name is Amy Kozak. I live at twenty-nine oh-one North Seventy-second. I am a northeast lifelong resident and a Cahoe PTO board member for almost a decade now. I chose this neighborhood on purpose due to the community's commitment to families and their love of children, and I mentioned that my kids have attended there for a very long time. I'm also an LPS teacher. I'm not here as a representative of LPS, but as one who cares deeply about kids arriving home safely from schools. As a mom of three and one soon to be driving on eighty-fourth, people are seeking to move to this part of town, and I am thrilled. With the Hy-Vee, Walmarts, Kohl's, and the new developments, what an exciting time. As someone who...as someone mentioned earlier, eighty-fourth used to be the end of town and cornfields. I love the fact that this is an area where people want to be. Cahoe has emphasized healthy...healthy living and exercise. Our P.E. teacher did the Ironman triathlon, so physical fitness is a huge part of the Cahoe community. Let's celebrate this in making the best choice now in that open stretch of road for it to be a school zone, and everyone wins. That intersection is heavy traffic, and that open stretch of road, I will admit, invites myself and others to tend to go at a higher speed. A school zone is a great step in the right direction to alert drivers to all the precious travelers who may not be now, but would then have the opportunity to cross there. Cahoe is asking for what's best as a safety precaution that, as it has been mentioned, has been given to other schools in similar situations. Thank you for your consideration and time. I realize it is a heart matter to me, and I'm also certain it is what's best as a safety matter as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Kozak?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Mr. Seacrest getting ready to come up.
Good evening. Kent Seacrest, twenty-three oh-nine Lake Street, representing myself. And as you all know, a man who is his own attorney has a fool for a client, so I will be the first to admit this. I personally have great empathy for the families and schoolchildren that live on the east side of eighty-fourth Street and in need of the school zone. With Cahoe, Saint Johns, and the other parochial schools, there's a lot of people going or should be walking back and forth but don't because of safety issues. When I was in college, getting a master's in urban planning, I was a pedestrian who got hit by a car traveling thirty-five miles an hour while crossing this...at a crosswalk in Iowa City. Luckily, I went flying over the car, broke their antenna, but only broke my leg and was one of the lucky ones. And I thought, you know, if you can get hit by a car in college, the probability is a lot higher when you're an elementary school person. So I looked at this kind of from a planning point of view, and of course, the other people have said a great job about the health issues and obesity, and when we do walk, we're driving less and theoretically creating capacity for the road network along the line. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan as our community guide, and there's...these two statements are in the comprehensive plan about the need for walkability along the way. And what's interesting to me is these are two, and there's a hundred and seventy-six other references in the comprehensive plan because of the issues that have already been discussed with walk...walking, walkability, sidewalks, and pedestrian. A hundred and seventy-six references. That's a lot for our community comprehensive plan to be talking about, this need along the way. And I...the other thing I just found interesting was, I looked at the future land use map, and I did not look at Cornhusker Highway, but I looked at all the other north, south, east, west arterials, and I was looking for red. Red is a designation in our comprehensive plan of commercial areas. And there...my theory and correlation was, when a community says...decides to put a lot of red commercial designation in their comp plan, they know that has a consequence. It means a lot of traffic. And along the way, I just looked at three streets, because eighty-fourth Street has a lot of red. O Street has a lot of red, and so does Pine Lake Road have a considerable amount of red. And what I found interesting was, most of eighty-fourth Street is posted forty-five miles or higher. Most. O Street, almost all of O Street is either forty miles or less. And Pine Lake Road is posted forty miles for the most part along its corridor. So eighty-fourth has over two million square feet, I think, designated red, and yet we're still posting it at forty-five miles an hour when I think that's probably excess traffic. Any questions?
So, are we to understand that in the areas where there's more commercial business, we expect maybe eventually we would be at forty miles per hour in this corridor anyway?
Well, there's lots of factors that go into posting, but I just, as a planner, normally hear and expect that when we do decide to put a lot of retail on a corridor, we should not expect to be going real fast because of the conflicts of people coming to and from shopping services. And if you just look at that, those other streets have a lower posted speed limit.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Seacrest?
Jane.
Jane.
Kent, why do you think eighty-fourth has a higher speed limit?
Well, as a planner, we have a lot of difficulty moving north-south in this community. There aren't that many streets that do go north-south continuously, and eighty-fourth is one of those streets that does tend to go north-south until we build an east beltway. It's been acting as our eastern corridor. I'm hoping with the increase...with the county paving Ninety-eighth Street and more focus on Ninety-eighth Street, that that will take some of the traffic off of eighty-fourth, because we're going to be adding it with all this commercial that we've designated in the comp plan, put back on eighty-fourth. A lot of traffic. Two million square feet is, I believe, is going to create a lot, a lot of traffic, and we should just start to anticipate it and lower the speed limit.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Anderson, sixty-nine thirty Chandon Drive, six-eight five-two-six. I'd like to talk tonight on behalf of the running community, as well as a mom who has had children attend Cahoe from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve. First, as manager of Fleet Feet Sports at seventy-seven oh-one Pioneer, formerly Red Dirt Running, the main focus of us as a running store is to promote health and wellness in Lincoln community, and just get people of all shapes, all sizes, all ages to get out and move more. I mean, obesity is a huge epidemic at the moment, and just getting people to move more, whether it's walking, running, riding their bike, just being active is extremely important. And along with that, we support any initiative that gets children to move more. I mean, instilling those healthy habits in children from a very early age is going to be huge to conquering obesity in the long run. So just basically, the community as a whole, and we had a Move More Lincoln campaign, just teaching children to walk to school, bike to school, but it needs to be done in a safe environment. And right now, eighty-fourth Street in Leighton is a huge roadblock. I had children attend Cahoe, a daughter, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve. I'm an avid runner. I make my children be active. Every single day of school, I walk them to school. My daughter was in kindergarten through second grade. Two younger siblings were in a stroller. I was known as a lady pushing the buggy every day up to Cahoe. That street is unsafe. I was fearful as a runner, as a parent crossing that street, but I felt it was quicker for me to walk my children to school than deal with the chaos of traffic and driving, which is why I chose to walk. Would I let them walk by themselves? No way. And I ask any of you, if you have any questions about whether or not it's important to put a school zone there, I challenge you to sit at that corner and see how many people speed through the intersection down that hill, how many people blow through the red light, how many people don't even stop before they turn right on a red, and see what that makes you think. I mean, would you want a child of yours or a grandchild to cross that street? Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Martinez, ninety-three fourteen Garland, Lincoln, Nebraska, six-eight five oh-five. My husband Cesar and I have been residents of northeast Lincoln since nineteen ninety-eight. I've run an in-home daycare center for nearly twenty-five years in northeast Lincoln. We've raised eight children here also. All of our children have attended the public and parochial schools in northeast Lincoln. We currently have one child at Mickel Middle School. Raising eight children and running a daycare center, I've centered my life around the safety of children. Northeast Lincoln is growing. Between Waterford, Harrison Heights, Prairie Village, and Prairie Village North, there are nearly a thousand new homes that have been built in the past ten years, and also two apartment complexes, one that only serves low-income population. This area has changed drastically and is now considered a residential area. All of these subdivisions are east of eighty-fourth. There are no school zone crossings north of O Street for any of these children to safely cross eighty-fourth Street. cross 84th Street. City traffic uses standards, which are just suggested guidelines. City traffic says we shouldn't have a school zone at Layton for the following arguments. Number one, there are too few children crossing at Layton, but their standard says they should be looking at probable number of children. There are probable 195 crosswalk users who need to cross 84th Street from Harrison Heights and Prairie Village in order to get to CAHO, a school that sits seven blocks off the arterial street in comparison to the 55 probable users crossing 84th Street to get to Pertle Elementary, a school that also sits several blocks off the arterial street. I'd like to point out that Mickey Esposito states in her Local View opinion that was recently in the paper, that the two South 84th Street schools are in close proximity to the school zone. That statement is simply not true. The only difference is, Pertle sits south of Oak Street and gets a school zone for a fraction of probable users. The second argument, there's already a traffic signal. Their guideline says that probable pedestrian crossing activity is already protected by a traffic signal. There is an obvious exception made at the busy intersection of 33rd and Vine for Hartley Elementary, as seen in this picture. Where there's a school, there's a school, the school crossing at the signalized intersection. The third argument, city traffic says that a school zone shouldn't go in where a speed limit is 40 miles an hour or higher. Again, we see exceptions to this guideline at Campbell Elementary, where city traffic reduces the speed from 40 to 25, and Pertle Elementary, where it reduces from 40 to 25, and at Norris Public Schools, where the speed limit reduces drastically from 55 to 35 miles per hour, as seen in that photo. Again, obvious exceptions to the suggested guideline.
That's the 35 right there.
The fourth argument, Public Works states, says that reducing the speed zone from 45 to 25 would create dangerous traffic conditions on North 84th, but the traffic on North 84th is already dangerous. 27,000 cars pass by that intersection every day. Children as young as five years old are crossing that street or expected to cross that street. They have greater risk than the average Husker fan crossing 9th Street on game days, but the city thinks Husker fans crossing at 9th Street just south of I-180 are safer with the speed zone reducing from 45 to 25, as seen in these pictures. That makes sense, but Mickey Esposito stated, "In order to provide safety for our children, we must continue to rely on research, experience, facts, and data to guide our decisions." The studies show that pedestrian accident at 25 miles per hour has only 20% chance of fatality, but a pedestrian accident at 45 miles an hour has greater than 80% chance of causing a fatality. Mickey also stated that traffic studies prove abrupt, the abrupt drops in speed from 45 to 25 caused problems in heavy traffic, but the city does just that for heavy, the heavy traffic of football Saturday traffic at 9th Street. Again, we see where exceptions are made to the accepted, the suggested guidelines, and sometimes those exceptions really make sense, such as placing a school zone at Layton makes sense to the 850-plus registered voters who are supporting this initiative. I would also like to note that the speed limit could be reduced at the Layton intersection from 45 to 40 miles an hour, just like we see the speed limit changes from 45 to 40 in less than a tenth of a mile heading north in the South 84th school zone, as seen in In addition to the safety benefits, there are also the health benefits.
Yeah, I have a question. So when you showed the, just going back to your picture for a moment, at I-180, then it's 45, and then it goes to 25, right at 9th Street?
Yes.
And then there's an intersection just south of that where Husker fans cross. Is that the point you were making?
Yes.
Okay. And then in addition to the health benefits that other folks have talked about, you have some other health benefits you wanted to point out?
I have, I have a lot of things that I didn't get to point out, so I just, I think that the government's primary responsibility is to protect the citizens, and they could protect the citizens in Northeast Lincoln by installing a school zone.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Will anyone else like to testify?
My name is Nolan Langemeyer. This is my sister, Jaden, and I go to Mickel, and she goes to CAHO. We would be able to ride our bikes to school if there was a school, if there's a school zone, but it is definitely not safe enough the way it is, and... I just think there should be a school zone there.
Okay.
Thank you, Nolan.
Questions? Thank you.
I want to hear from Jaden. Wonderful time. I want to talk to you. By the way, I'd like to compliment all the children for their behavior here tonight and congratulate their parents.
Would anyone else like to testify?
Good evening. I'm Dana Mavis, and I live at 8970 Prairie Village Drive. We were one of the first homes built in the Prairie Village neighborhood in 2004, and at that time, children weren't on our mind and schools weren't on our mind, but I definitely, after being in Lincoln for 30 years, had learned of CAHO and heard of it and was aware it was one of the best academic schools in the district. We stumbled upon it while we were driving one night. Oh, there's CAHO, you know? And I just want to say, I don't have a lot left to say because I feel like everything that's been presented is good factual-based data and information. I did want to also touch upon the fact of how proud I am of the kids that are here and their parents. A lot of schools in Lincoln and LPS have taken on something that's called a school-wide expectation, and that's being safe, being responsible, being respectful, and CAHO has added another one, which is being ready. And so I think that the students and kids here tonight have definitely showed that they're being respectful and they're being responsible. And I think when we talk about a school zone as parents, and I think as a city, we should adapt that as well. You know, it's part of being safe, being responsible, and being respectful. I don't feel that that's a safe area for any kids east of 84th to be crossing to and from. And my son actually just said, "Mom, that would be the best one to do," is if there was a thingy to go over 84th or under 84th. And I said, "Why don't you come and tell him that?" So I also wanted to touch upon the fact to take into consideration, since we've lived in that area in 2004, we've seen lots of detours and construction on the roadways. Traffic picks up on 84th on that corridor if 70th Street has lane closures or construction going on, along with Highway 2. When Highway 2 has something going on, we see a tremendous increase in the amount of semis that utilize 84th. And it will back traffic up, they will just be backed up in both lanes, and it's really crazy. And it's harder for them to slow down if they're going, you know, 45, 50 miles an hour. The speed limit just got reduced recently in the last year. And I know Mr. Langemeyer talked about how he worries every time about having to use his car to shield a pedestrian or a child or a student. The first thing that always comes to my mind is, oh my gosh, they're going to cross. Please let them be safe because as somebody who holds a degree in allied health, I know I'm going to have to get out and try and save them, you know, and provide first aid or CPR. So that's one thing I think of when I come across that and see kids using it. And I just think, even if it's just one life that might be saved or made a little bit safer with the school zone crossing there, to me, that is well worth $150,000 to get this done. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, thank you for coming. So what I'm hearing from you is you've also seen children crossing that 84th Street to get over to CAHO?
Yes, ma'am.
From the east side? I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you been, have you had occasion to see them before school and after school?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Mavis? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify?
My name is Brad Beam. I'm 3710 Woods Avenue. I've heard a lot of discussion about the students that are east of 84th having this issue of crossing it. I'm an experience from being on the west side. I grew up at Pertle School, my backyard dumped into the playground. I would have to go across 84th Street to see my friends up there. So when we talk about 195 people being affected by this who live east of 84th Street, there are actually people within on the west side that have to migrate up that direction to see their friends. So it's not just the impact of those 195 students that live on the east side of 84th, but it's actually the students who live on the west side of 84th that are also impacted because they sometimes migrate the other direction. They don't live up there, but they go to see their friends, and so they have the crosswalk issue also. So I, I've heard a lot of talk about everything east, but we're forgetting that there are students that live west that also need that access, that ability to go across 84th Street. I experienced that. I remember drive, riding my bike up to Indian Hills to see my friends across 84th Street. I remember having to ride over to Vine Street for midget football practice. So these are all things that would be applicable to the people who, who not only live east but live west of that, of that area. So thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Beam? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify?
Hi. My name is Wendy Piper, 7550 Colby Street. Everyone here has talked about the health benefits, which are very important, and they've talked about the issues that are currently at the intersection of 84th and Layton. A secondary effect of this is the traffic around the school. Since so many parents have to drive in, it has created congestion to the point where I live on the west side of 84th, and I still wouldn't let my children ride their bikes or walk to school because it creates too much traffic. I am a nurse who works night shift, so I can take my kids to and from school, and I've had this opportunity to see both the drop-off and the pickup. Parents start arriving to school at anywhere from 2:45, when the bells don't ring until 3:38. I now have a special needs child who attends CAHO, and I have to pick him up early to attend speech and other appointments, and even getting there at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you have to double park or park far enough away to go get your child because of the congestion at the school. You've heard testimony about how a child was hit at the school this past school year. Part of the problem is, again, that congestion where parents are parking three wide, going on a two-way street just to get to their children. This is a continued problem, and if you decrease the traffic at the school by allowing, making it safer for kids to walk to school, the congestion would decrease, creating a safer way. Mickel is the junior high school that's, CAHO feeds into, and a lot of times after school, most of the siblings, some siblings will walk up to CAHO and hang out to pick up their younger siblings to walk them home. Now, those aren't even kids that cross 84th Street, it's just the congestion at CAHO is so dangerous that even for parents to allow their children to walk, even with teachers at all the intersections around the school, it's still a very congested, very dangerous school to pick up your children from or to let them walk from. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Jane.
Well, what else can CAHO do besides encouraging people to, to walk or bike to school, but what can they do to control the congestion that is currently going around the school?
As a member of the PTO and a board member, this has been an ongoing problem. Our former principal, it was a lot of effort and time he put into it. Our current principal has been there for two years now, and it is still something she deals with. Some of the things that our former principal put into place was one-way streets, creating a one-way traffic flow, which was helpful. Our new principal was told that is not something that they'll allow, which has made two ways going into, on the south side of CAHO, which is the main drive into, which makes it even more dangerous for kids to come and cross. We've, our, we've had, they've had police come and patrol the school, but that doesn't seem like a viable solution long-term to always have police at the school. Besides walking and maybe, you know, the things they have in place, the, the teachers at the intersections is helpful, but it's not, you know, they, they aren't there in the mornings. And the response that we've received as a school is that because of the teacher contracts, they can't have teachers out there in the morning. Last year, they tried to get parent volunteers, and of course, there's just not enough parents in the morning that can dedicate their time on a consistent basis. Some parents were willing to volunteer, but it wasn't anything consistent enough that we could make something safe for the school. So until something's more permanent, it's, it's too dangerous to let your kids walk to school.
Cindy.
So in your estimation, creating safety for the 84th Street crossing at Layton would help alleviate the traffic and solve both the issues for those that are east of 84th and also those of you who have children west of 84th?
I believe it would. I am a former CAHO student myself, and many, many years ago, when I attended CAHO, everyone walked. There was not traffic. It was safe. You started walking, you met up with your friends. If it was safe for kids to walk, it could also be a social, as well as healthy time for kids to walk, meet up with their friends, and walk to school. However, that safe environment doesn't currently exist.
That was when Kathy Danic referred to it as the edge of the world.
It was. No, it really was. Layton was gravel road, and one day we were at PE and a cow was walking down it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? All right. Next item, please.
Good evening, city council members. I'm Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and with me tonight is Lonnie Berkland, our Traffic Engineering Manager. While we are here to testify in opposition to the resolution to install the school zone, we understand that everyone in this room has safety in mind, and it's just that we disagree on how we get there. We are only here to defend safety. The city attorney has already shared that the order to install does not comply with state law. So we aren't here to defend the rules, but we certainly can provide insight on how the rules are applied. As a department, safety is our mission, and we take that responsibility to heart. We are mindful that residents are placing their trust in us to keep them and their families safe, and our traffic engineers who do this every day are very aware that one wrong decision can have lasting and sometimes very serious impact. That's why any traffic decision is put through the wringer. These decisions require careful consideration, engineering study, the application of reasonable standards, research, and data. Traffic safety is not arbitrary. It is not a guess. It is scientific and proven. When putting your life and your child's life in someone's hands, do you want that person guessing about what might work? Or would you feel safer knowing that data, research, cutting-edge technology, experience, expertise, and best practices informed that decision? Just like a medical professional, our traffic engineers are expected to make decisions and perform their duties based on the careful analysis and study of facts, of what works, of what doesn't, what is proven, what isn't, even when there is emotion involved. And what they've determined here is that the installation of this school zone is unsafe. And I understand, I understand this because I'm not an engineer. It seems very counterintuitive. How could a school zone be dangerous? Well, Lonnie is here to answer that question for you, and he will share all of the data, research, and engineering that tells us why this is a bad idea. And with that in mind, we humbly and respectfully ask you to hear us out tonight. Please consider and heed our warning and understand that we are trying to keep your children safe. Before we get to Lonnie, I would ask everyone to... Before we get to Lonnie, I would ask everyone to consider this. Any safety mechanism, when applied incorrectly, is not safe. Think about your child's car seat. There is a right and safe way to install a car seat, and there is a wrong and unsafe way to install it. The same is true for school zones. Our traffic experts have studied everything about this installation, from speed limits to number of lanes, to crash data, to ped bike vehicle data, to the location and environment of the corridor, to the existing crossing, to driver behavior, to best practices, standards, guidelines, policies, and procedures. And all of this information leads us to one conclusion. A school zone in this location is not safe for children and drivers. Therefore, we cannot in good conscience support the resolution. There is just too much at stake. With that, Lonnie will run you through the engineering analysis, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
If I could ask Miki a question?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Miki, thanks for being here tonight. So you mentioned something about the, the city attorney saying this was unlawful. We haven't heard that. Can you tell me what exactly is unlawful about putting a school zone in to protect this crossing?
I, I would like Lonnie to share his PowerPoint, so I'd love to have that opportunity. What we have seen from Jeff Kirkpatrick, the city attorney, he shared an email between you and I and Lonnie Berkland that if this is installed and it does not follow and comply with MUTCD standards, then it would violate state law. And, and, and I, I have that email if you need to see it.
Sure, so it's the Mudco standard? They call that Mudco, correct? Is that right?
No, they call it MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
I'm sorry, spell that again. M?
MUTCD.
Okay. Gotcha. And I think we've been referring to it as Mudco.
Okay, but again, we're here to defend safety, and that's why it's important to hear from Lonnie.
Okay, I understand. So, but what I'm hearing is, and I think I know the email you're referring to, and it basically said if this violates, if we put in something that violates the Mudco standards, that it's unlawful.
You have to follow the MUTCD standards under state law.
Okay, thank you.
Did Mr. Payall want to observe something on this?
Did you want to say?
Well, one is I didn't feel it was appropriate to have Miki describe what the status of the law might be. And it gets to be more complicated, I think, in light of how our Nebraska Supreme Court has looked at the issue of putting in traffic control devices and the issue of liability. And that's where the cases of all that I've read have come up, and that's talking about, is the city liable for a decision that it makes if it doesn't abide by the conditions? Or if it does abide by the conditions in the Uniform Traffic Control Manual? And, and on a case of liability, the court says you have discretion. So, bad decision, good decision, abusive discretion, it doesn't matter. You're going to have, the city would have liability for those damages. So if somebody, a child gets hurt, or if a car gets rear-ended from another car stopping, they're not going to be able to blame the city on the decision we made as to whether or not we put in a traffic control device or not. So from a liability point of view, the city, we're kind of protected either way based on state immunity that we have as a sovereign government. And, and that law provides whether that discretion is even abused. So even if you make a decision totally contrary to the evidence before you, the city would be not liable. Now, the question comes back is, are you fulfilling the purposes of the Nebraska Rules of the Road for operating motor vehicles? And the idea that this is a standard that comes down from the federal government, they've adopted theirs, the state has to adopt one in accordance with the federal standard. We adopt in accordance with a state standard. And all those principles talk about based on engineering studies or based on engineering judgment. So, so in fulfilling the guidelines of those federal-state standards, it's really, it boils down to are you abiding by good engineering principles, good engineering judgment? It's different than just illegality or, or liability issues. So it's, it's, it gets to be kind of a gray because we don't have cases saying, gee, what do you do? Are you liable for spending money erroneously? You know, that, that's not talked about in liability for tort damages, but if somebody brought a taxpayer lawsuit and says, gee, you shouldn't have spent $150,000 for this traffic control device because it wasn't mandated under state standards, under local standards, that's, that's a different question. I don't know if there's any answers out there for that. It's, it's more complicated, so I don't think I want to go too much further than that. The city attorney's been looking at this a lot longer than I have on this issue. He's not here tonight.
Well, and so I guess what, what it comes down to is kind of, we have now warning of what's happening. If something happens at the accident, at that intersection, if we don't have a speed zone in, then we're just as liable as if there is a speed zone there. But that, the part that might be, as far as the lawfulness of the Mudco standard, that it really does dig down to the local, the judgment of the local engineers. So if we don't?
Yeah, yeah. I think you're, you're supposed to be looking at engineering studies or engineering judgment and making a decision.
Thank you.
So that's a good clarification. I'd like to get to Lonnie. And what is required is that an engineering study of traffic conditions, et cetera, et cetera, support and justify an action to install. And, and that is what Rick is saying. But again, we're here to talk about safety, and I want to make sure that the city attorney is talking about the law.
Lonnie, you're up.
Hey. If you want to pull up those slides. I'll try to be brief. I know you've been here a while already. So Lonnie Berkland, Manager of Traffic Engineering for City Lincoln Public Works Department. Just wanted to probably touch on a few brief items, these four or five bullets, just from the last couple of weeks, hearing a lot of the news stories and seeing some other things. I just wanted to probably clarify, get everybody on the same page with a few inaccuracies and just provide you some information. And I've got some of this that I'll, I'll pass out here in a minute or that Ms. Esposito can. I guess first off, in regards to school speed zones, really, we see school speed zones as just one tool in our professional traffic engineering toolbox to promote pedestrian safety. And we're all here tonight, I think, on the same team. It's kind of my daily job, my team's daily job, is to implement the safest and most efficient forms of traffic control that we can citywide. But a little bit of quick history on school speed zones. Their intended purpose and how we apply those are really for, to create additional reaction time for motorists. So the ideal school speed zone is in an area, the right application, an appropriate street segment, where we want to slow that traffic down 10 to 15 mile an hour underneath the regulatory posted speed. And it's probably in a roadway section where there's a lot of open access management, block-by-block intersections. The whole point of a school speed zone and slowing that traffic down is to keep drivers aware of potential unexpected crossing activity. So a bicyclist, a pedestrian at an open intersection, at an uncontrolled crosswalk, that's really the point behind a school speed zone so that you do have that reaction time to slow down. We've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, hitting a pedestrian with a vehicle. And obviously, if that unfortunate thing happens, it's, it's better if you're moving slow than fast. So we look at a lot of the street function and the street character, and really, the proper application that we look is centered around during school time. And so again, if there is a school located right on a collector, maybe a minor arterial, has these certain street characteristics, where that crosswalk is really predominantly used by school students, and maybe not used a lot by those students or other pedestrians during times when the flashers aren't operating to give them a false sense of security, that's really the perfect school zone, is where its function is a school crossing. And so, so that's really what we look at. Touch quick on speed limits. I know we've heard things about posting a speed limit at 40 or 35 or other things, and I just want everybody to know that we don't post speed limits arbitrarily. They are data-driven. We use industry-best standards and practices. There's a, there's an item that's been around for decades upon decades in the traffic engineering industry that when we set regulatory posted speed limits on any street in the entire city, it's based on an item called the 85th percentile speed. And I've got a handout I'll leave with you. I won't get in the weeds, I promise, like I usually like to do. But it's basically this concept that 85th percentile speed is, it's the speed at or below which 85% of the traffic is traveling at in a free-flow condition. So if you had no signs out there, because of the roadway characteristics, the development, the access points, the feel of that facility, it's the speed at about 85% of the traffic would be traveling at. So it, it's kind of this threshold where you post a speed limit and you say, you know, 15% of the population is probably going to exceed this, but that's the measuring stick that we use. And so this last year or so, when we lowered the speed limit out there north of Holdridge, again, we've got an additional signal at Lexington Avenue, a lot of those access points as you go further north. Certainly.
One minute.
We lower speed limits when, when it gets to that point.
We were told that staff would not have to have time limits.
Well, you're here testifying in opposition, and my job as chair is to treat everybody who's testifying equally. So I can?
That hasn't been practiced, but?
I wasn't chair.
Couple of quick notes on North 84th and South 84th. And again, this is in the handout, really that street character and function. Here's a shot of South 84th by Sandalwood, eight or nine access points near that flasher. Here's the one further south at Oakdale that's right by Messiah Lutheran. Again, lots of access points. You kind of see the residential nature of that area, open intersections, no median, no access control, an unsignalized crosswalk, 40 mile an hour. That's what we're talking about. I put the yellow dot up here on the Layton one because there was no place to put it because there are no access points. It's a median-divided, very different-looking facility, as you can see here, north of Holdridge. Not a lot of unexpected activity of street, activity in pedestrians and bicyclists that would pop out of side streets. So that's really the difference. These last couple of slides are really just some crash data. This one was interesting and pulling down by Purtle.
Time, and I'll give you the same opportunity I've given other people that ask questions.
I'm also the co-chair because I think we, we were, we wanted to hear as much testimony as possible, and certainly from all the families. And I think we had maybe about an hour and a half or two hours. And I would like to see our staff have at least 10 minutes, maybe 15 minutes, I think then.
I'll allow questions, and you can respond to the questions.
Sure.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions about the crash data because I know some of the family members that were here gave the, the cause of fatality at higher speeds and at a reduced speed. There are fewer fatalities or the likelihood of someone to survive a very horrific crash at a lower speed. And Lonnie, could you tell me a little bit about the crash data that you have up there?
Yeah, so this is a simple, most recent five-year period, and this is at the current South 84th Street, what we would consider probably the school speed zone for Purtle Elementary. And the interesting thing about this location is this is where we do have a full traffic signal at Sandalwood. Of these 15 crashes that have occurred in the last five-year period, actually, more than 50% of those have happened during the short amount of time when the school speed zone flashers are on. They're on about a half hour to 45 minutes in the morning and about that same time at the end of the night. So we've got 50% of all crashes at this one location happen during 6% of the time of the day when the speed zone flashers are activated.
And note that Purtle has been mentioned tonight that it is not immediately adjacent to the road, which is what a lot of parents have been saying. They want us to apply the standard similarly. But what we're seeing in the data is that for 50% of the time during the school zone operation, it's, it's more dangerous. And so we are really examining whether or not this is an appropriate application.
So are you saying that if you could, you would consider removing the crosswalk at Sandalwood?
Currently, we have the authority to do that, and it would be supported and justified by engineering study and judgment. But that's, that's a broader conversation to have.
I think, Councilman, the reason we probably point this one out is there is even a pedestrian crash that has occurred within this, within this zone. And so as we're looking at a lot of these locations across town and that, again, uniform application, I think ones like this that we've highlighted, about 18 to 20 of them out of our 46 current speed zones, are definitely up for sort of review and evaluation. And maybe we ought to put, prepare to stop and flashing, advanced flashers at this location instead of a speed zone. Those are the types of things that we're, we're evaluating.
Just to be clear, the, of the, all those accidents, only one involved a pedestrian?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, so it's doing what it's supposed to do in that it's slowing down traffic? Even if there, if maybe the cars are bumping into each other's rear ends, they're not bumping into kids?
I would say there's a gross over-representation of rear end, lane weaving, and sideswipe activity in these crashes in this data that occurs when the flashers are operating.
And if you're creating danger for cars, you're creating danger in an intersection for pedestrians and bicyclists.
So, but right now, at that intersection, we're bringing people from 45 miles per hour to a complete stop. And what this would be doing is bringing them from 45 potentially to 40 for less than a tenth of a mile, like south of 84th Street. And maybe that is the issue, is how long the 40 miles per hour is. And then slowing it at 25 before the stop.
At Purtle, it's 40 down to 25.
Right, but it, but it's marked, it's 45, headed north, it's 45 until less than a tenth of a mile before the school zone when it gets marked to change to 40. So it's less than a tenth of a mile.
I have a question. So why does Purtle have the, the safety controls that it has if they are causing that many crashes?
Well, this was actually discovery of these, this crash data was recently, when, when Lonnie took over as traffic manager, he started examining with his staff more closely these, these school zones. And so this has been a recent development and why we're examining these very closely and making recommendation for where we have to make adjustments. And again, when the school is not immediately adjacent or very near in proximity to the road, it becomes less obvious for drivers to, to adjust.
So Lonnie, are you, in your presentation, going to talk a little bit about the differences between the, the other crossings that are on 84th Street and make some reference to the one that we're discussing on Layton?
Yeah, and I mean, the, the point of this slide, just real quick again, is that as an exact 180, it, it appears that the crossing that we have at the current, down by Oakdale, which is the one right beside Messiah Lutheran, which is actually just an uncontrolled crosswalk, appears to be working very well. In five years, there's been no crashes north of the intersection, no crashes at the intersection, just one to the south. And wouldn't you know it, the one that happened was a rear end that happened during when the flashers were operational. So probably a good application at that point.
If I, yeah, so that one down, Messiah though is deep in the 40 mile per hour zone and it slows to 25. Isn't that right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Benny?
Yeah, you mentioned in passing, Lonnie, something about flashers and it's referenced here on your paper. So?
Is your, is your mic on?
No, it's not.
Hi, better? Sorry. You mentioned in passing, and I wasn't quite clear, I heard you, something about removing flashers or replacing flashers. I notice there's a lot of reference to the school's own flashing lights.
Yeah, one of the, one of the key strategies that, as I've gotten up to speed, that the city has had some success with over the years is at a few of these places where maybe the data has not been so great, where we've had school speed zones applied, and probably primarily at locations where you have a mid-block pedestrian signal. If you can vision, a lot of those are just constantly green until the button is pushed, mid-block type pedestrian crossing location at a trail. A lot of times what we find is instead of slowing traffic down and getting a lot of non-compliance through those zones and sort of red light running and things when the button is pushed, we can actually go in, remove that school speed zone, but add advanced, prepare to stop when flashing beacons so that it kind of wakes motorists up when that cycle is going to transition and go through a phase change. And, and that is something that's been successful.
For me, I'm sorry, can you put, school zones are about those flashing lights? You see the flashing signs, it's, the speed might be reduced. These are similar or very different or?
Well, this would, this would basically be a set of flashing beacons like we have out at 84th and Layton, like we have at many locations across the city, that when the signal is going to change from green to yellow to red, there is an advanced warning, about six to eight seconds, depending on approaching speed, where we have advanced beacons that will start to flash and say, hey motorists, this signal is going to change. And it kind of prepares people for? And it kind of prepares people for maybe something they're not used to if it's at a PED signal to say, I need to be prepared to slow down, I'm not going to make it through that intersection. There's likely some crossing activity. And so those advanced beacons have served us really well.
So I think Benny's question is, the advanced beacons tell you be prepared to slow down and stop. But I think Benny was saying that the flashing beacons that say school district that are different, like twenty-five miles an hour. I think those are.
Those are different.
Different than the advanced beacons. We're talking about just in a school zone, like on, on Vine Street.
Right.
From about Twenty-seventh to Thirty-third.
Yeah, those would be the ones that are tied to the twenty-five mile an hour signs that create that during, there's a sign that says while flashing.
Right.
And it's overhead.
Yeah, it's turning the speed down to twenty-five mile an hour.
And have you, in your research or the studies that you have looked into, do they show on those areas like on Vine Street that I'm familiar with as I go there to get to my, my office, that are there the same amount of frequencies of crashes along a strip like that?
It's a good question again, and, and we've got about sixteen of those forty-five on a list that, that we have been looking at evaluating and we've been pulling more and more data. I think in general, I would tell you that on the proper type of street facility, which has a lot of driveways, a lot of open intersections, a lot of potential for unexpected activity to occur, people seem to be very mindful of braking and that activity and they seem to be successful in those applications.
Where they can, they can see a school.
Yeah, where they, where they haven't been as successful is where there's not an apparent reason for them, there's not an adjacent school. This map, as you, you know, probably in that same line shows Cahill Elementary and we've put this sort of half-mile buffer around the school. And if we, if we sort of wouldn't use engineering standards, guidelines, national best practices and just applied that same type of circumference around all the schools, this is what the speed zone application would look like throughout the city of Lincoln. It, it would basically create a, a twenty-five mile an hour reduced speed zone on, on most of the arterial and collector network. And so that's the, that's the biggest concern and, and what we look at.
Tindy?
Thank you. So Lonnie, I want to thank you for participating. You know that this has been a long haul and we've participated in a lot of discussions. And one of the discussions that came to the forefront in a meeting where Kathy Danek and several other community leaders attended, we were told, you told us that, hey, if the, the barrier here is forty-five to twenty-five and if it wasn't, if it was at forty, this would be a no-brainer. And basically you had said that, that the money wasn't the issue. In other words, you were talking about that money wasn't the issue, but if we were at forty. And so the, and, and so there's kind of been this, this message that I think is false that maybe it's unlawful or against MudCo standards to reduce the speed from forty-five to twenty-five for the purposes of a school zone. And so I went ahead and, and made contact with the Federal Highway Administration, the Congressional Affairs Team, and they indicated to me, and because we scoured MudCo and couldn't find it. And MudCo, again, that's a M-U-T-C-D, we've just been calling it MudCo.
Okay.
And they said in no uncertain terms, there is no prohibition in the MudCo against reducing a forty-five mile per hour speed zone to twenty-five mile per hour for a school speed zone. And so you'd agree with that statement, correct?
I would, I would agree that the M-U-T-C-D points out that it should be based on engineering study.
Okay.
And, and in similar fashion with the forty-five mile an hour speed limit being posted at forty. The M-U-T-C-D very clearly states that should be based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed again and, and data collected at the site.
Okay, so there's no, there's no prohibition in MudCo from the forty-five to twenty-five. It's an engineering judgment?
It's, um, speed limits have to be in MudCo. Speed limits have to be determined through an engineering study, meaning that eighty-fifth percentile. So you can't set to forty without. So technically, if a speed limit had the support and justification of that eighty-fifth percentile study to get to forty miles per hour, then it would be legal. And, and that's what.
Well, it, it's not illegal if it would be in, in, if it would be in their engineering judgment. That's what I'm getting to, that's what the federal government seems to say from MudCo.
Yes.
And so, so there's a couple of things because we see down and see, this is what I've gotten from your testimony today and I'm really glad we were able to hear this today because I haven't heard, really put this together before. But where the traffic is coming north on Eighty-Fourth, speed zone changes from forty-five to forty and very quickly then goes to twenty-five and that's where the accidents are happening. But where the speed zone, the school speed zone is well within the forty mile per hour corridor, then there hasn't been an issue of that, of that nature. And so I, so I was kind of thinking, well, why don't they just change it to forty? And you can even do it a tenth of a mile like you did it down on South Eighty-Fourth. But I think it makes more sense with the parents, one of the parents asked for something that was a little wider than what we talked about. So I do want to ask you, because the, in my resolution, I had sought out your counsel on what would we be looking for in terms of a speed zone. And so if we were to put a school speed zone to protect the Eighty-Fourth Street crossing at Layton, then I have been told that the parameters of that, the outside edges would be Windmill Avenue and Lexington Avenue. Is that correct?
The typical application would be two hundred feet in advance of a crosswalk, generally an unsignalized crosswalk where you would want to implement that. On a higher speed facility, it would go up to as far as four hundred feet in advance.
Okay, and so this, I think, and I think the Law Department got in touch with you about where we should, where that would be located. And that's about two tenths of a mile on either side of the, of the crossing. Does that sound correct?
Well, the current prepare-to-stop-when-flashing beacons are about four hundred and fifty to five hundred feet, I believe, in advance of the Layton Avenue intersection. So an application like that would be within even the prepare-to-stop-when-flashing beacons. The concern I guess we have with that is that those advanced flashing beacons are timed for forty-five mile an hour traffic. We are unable to alter those by time of day during when the, the twenty-five mile an hour flashing beacons would be. So I, I guess the thing I've described to folks in theory, if you went past the prepare-to-stop beacons just in time where they had not came on yet, assuming you had cleared the intersection and then you saw twenty-five mile an hour school zone signs and slowed your rate of speed down, you would then not clear the intersection, you would see the yellow and the red come up for the traffic signal and you may be quite surprised by that because you're used to seeing this warning that the light is going to change. And so it's probably an application where if, if you have the speed zone, you don't have the advanced flashers. And those advanced flashers were installed in twenty-twelve to address some of that vertical profile and, and they've done a good job. This, this slide kind of points to that.
I'm sorry, so Windmill Avenue is actually well north of the current flashers and Lexington as well, south of the flashing beacons that you're talking about now.
Yeah, so a zone would be a little tighter to the actual crossing location, just like the ones on South Eighty-Fourth Street.
I see, okay, thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
So you can't have both and consider that safe, correct? You, you should have either the advanced beacon warning or the, the school zone reduction in speed and those flashing lights that indicate twenty-five miles an hour, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And that's what we're finding with the signal timing adjustments because those yellow change intervals, those all-red clearance intervals are set to clear an intersection as you drive through before an opposing side street green comes on or before pedestrians would get a, a walk light. And if you start slowing down traffic that are not set for those, those basic signal timing settings that are set for the prevailing regulatory speed, you sort of wreak havoc on those clearance intervals and those change intervals. And I think that's, that's in, in, in a large part why we see some of the data that, that we see.
Can you explain that data? It's very important since the.
Yeah, this is, the, the last shot is just Eighty-Fourth and Layton. And then just in terms of a total crash ranking citywide, again, on the last five years of data, when we look across all of our intersections, and this has been provided by our, our consultant, that's the slide that's up here now. The intersection of Eighty-Fourth and Layton, I, I deem it to be, to be very safe. In terms of total crashes, it ranks one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth. It ranks one-hundred-and-eighty-seventh in severe crash, which is injury or fatality related. In terms of its crash rate rank, which considers traffic volume and the rate that crashes occur, it actually ranks five-hundred-and-sixty-eighth in our system. And for severe crash rate, it ranks seven-hundred-and-fifty-eighth. And then when we look at it compared to major arterials with collector signals, we have lots of functional classification. Major-major would be forty-eighth and oh, this is a major collector. We have major-local, collector-local, I won't bore you with the zillion categories, but it basically ranks outside of our top fifty. We have one-hundred-and-fifty-seven of these types of signalized major collector intersections and this ranks sixty-second out of all those in terms of its crash data.
Which is one of the worst, so we can get a perspective.
Which, what is, what is worse? Is one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth better or is first better?
You don't want to be number one in this category.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah.
What's another intersection though that can give us a, like, what's the worst intersection for crashes in the city of Lincoln?
Oh, boy.
In the city of Lincoln.
I'm trying to think, I might have to lean on one of my partners. Just look at this list. He's drawing a blank on the spot too.
So I have a, a study here that says in major collector and major local traffic signals, Eighty-Fourth, North Eighty-Fourth and Layton is, is number one. And granted, this was in two thousand and ten, but I think this gives us an indication of why parents are terrified to send their kids across that street.
Exactly, I think you just threw us a softball because that study led to the reason that we installed the advanced flashing beacons and now it has dropped off the list. Those were installed in twenty-twelve, so you bet.
So, and I think that one of the things, and, and, one of the things I heard you say was basically, one of the considerations though is if the intersection is functioning almost solely as a school crossing and based on the data that you gave us, we have one-hundred-and-ninety-five kids at least, that's just from Cahill, not County Mickel, that live east of Eighty-Fourth and have to cross Eighty-Fourth Street every day somehow. And we're hearing about traffic accidents and hit and runs near Cahill. But it would indicate from your studies and from the testimony we heard here tonight that the only people that seem to be using that are children. There, it's being witnessed by people who drive their kids to school. There are some that are low income that can't afford to drive their kids to school and their kids must cross the street. We've heard from an avid runner who said, hey, I don't even feel safe crossing the street and I, but I walk my kids every day. And so we, it sounds to me like that's all that's using that crosswalk. It's almost dedicated to kids from that, that school. And we're, we would have a lot more if the parents felt safe. So I think that's an important consideration that you gave us. What is it functioning as? And in the resolution, I did want to ask you, that one of the things that we, that was placed in the resolution was a directive that Public Works shall take steps necessary to create and install the reduced school speed zone in an expeditious manner and shall make speed limit changes to the, excuse me, the surrounding portion of Eighty-Fourth Street corridor if any are needed to bring the roadway into conformance with the standards intended to improve the safety of the school zone being installed. And so that gives Public Works the ability, should this resolution pass, to reduce the speed zone if you need to, so long as you, it passes the same studies as South Eighty-Fourth, I would assume. But it gives you the ability to make the changes that you need to do in order to make it safe if you feel there are some safety standards that need to be improved.
Well, Ms. Lamb, you bring up a good point. This order to install or have our Public Works and Utilities Department install something that not only is not supported by an engineering study, an independent engineering study, it is actually antithetical to what our engineers are telling us already through their engineering study. And so Lonnie has explained that how speed limits are set. They're set through engineering study and engineering judgment, meaning that eighty-fifth percentile.
I understand.
Those standards, so what you're ordering here, we can't just deliver to you unless we have support and justification of an engineering study that legitimizes the installation of this traffic control. That's what the M-U-T-C-D requires and the state law requires us to follow M-U-T-C-D standards.
So would you say that South Eighty-Fourth Street follows M-U-T-C, MudCo standards?
I believe it does, yeah.
Okay, and so Eighty-Fourth Street, I think Mr. Lamire is going to have an opportunity to come up and rebut. And I think he brought something that shows Eighty-Fourth Street is basically forty-five mile per hour and forty hour, mile per hour zone. And that seems to be the standard, so.
So let me clarify on South Eighty-Fourth Street. We are showing you crash data, but we agree that it conforms to the standard. So our engineers are saying that while it conforms, it isn't adjacent to, immediately adjacent to a school. And so, but the, the M-U-T-C-D does not require immediately, that it immediately be adjacent to a school. So it does conform to M-U-T-C-D, but why we wanted to demonstrate it to you was to show that it had some significant crash data, which was worrisome because it, because of that distance to the school.
Thank you, I understand. South is different than north in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Not for us. All children and all pedestrians and all bicyclists and all motorists are protected by our department and we take that responsibility very seriously. This is one Lincoln and, and that's how we apply the rules.
Okay, Benny?
I was worried my question was going to, thank you, sure, it was going to go a bit weird with your statement. We're looking at crash data, which I assume comes from police reports. Someone called the policeman and there was crash data. And we're also talking about children, pedestrians crossing. Can you tie that all together to me while we're taking from cars crashing to slowing down traffic so people can cross? I'm getting a little in the weeds there.
Yeah, we do. You know, the school speed zones and in an application like this, you know, there's been some discussion tonight that there has to be some, you know, minimum exposure or, you know, minimum number of pedestrians or counts or something. And, and other than a, a school warrant where we look at, you know, gap studies, basically the amount of gaps in free-flow traffic, there's, there's not a, for a school speed zone application, we would be fine if there were, you know, five students that use that every day, if it was on an appropriate facility. Those counts don't have to be way high and way off the charts. That, that's really not the point. It's really about applying, again, that, that slow speed along a facility that meets that roadway function, the characteristic, the posted speed limit and that we can safely apply a differential of speed that, that hopefully won't cause additional crashes.
I have a question, Lonnie. There was one last slide that you had on US Highway thirty-four in Fletcher. Is that near, in Fallbrook?
Middle School.
In Highlands?
Mm-hmm.
The Scoe Middle School?
Scoe Middle School, right, is about a, a mile away.
So what does that last?
Yeah, I just included that one. That's actually scheduled again, it's being evaluated. We're doing a right turn lane improvement project out on the highway. We're improving the prepare-to-stop-when-flashing beacon configuration, some of the signal timings, the geometry. We're building a brand-new set of roadway down into the Highlands out at that intersection. And as part of those proposed design plans, we're looking at potentially removing that speed zone, that flasher that actually is set at forty-five mile an hour down from a sixty mile an hour speed. So it's a little bit different animal. You would question a little bit with the discussion of students, you know, maybe stepping out into moving traffic. Obviously at forty-five mile an hour, the injury and mortality rate is almost ninety-five percent. And so that application as a school speed zone honestly doesn't make a lot of sense. Again, we see over forty percent of the crashes that have happened out here during six percent of the day when the flashers are on, which is what's highlighted in yellow. Rear end, lane weaving, red light running, when you dig into the crash reports, it's one that's, that's an issue. And again, that's a location where we have prepare-to-stop-when-flashing beacons way in out, way in and advance of this school speed zone. And we feel that if we can adjust those, improve that intersection, that, that fifteen mile an hour, that, that speed zone could come out and actually clean a lot of this up.
Okay, other questions, John?
You know, over the years, we've talked about warrants. In other words, does a situation warrant a signalized intersection? And I know a number of the testifiers were talking about standards. Did they mean warrants or am I missing something here? Are there a couple of different things?
You're right on there. You have to have stand, or warrants for the installation of any traffic control device.
And are those promulgated by Federal Highway or National Highway? And are those promulgated by federal highway or national highway?
Federal highway through the MUTCD, and then state law has incorporated the MUTCD.
So as you would look at this eighty-fourth and Layton situation, can you, what are there, like, five warrants or five categories, or? I'm out of my field.
For the traffic signal installation itself, in terms of the school speed zone, that's really based on eighty-fifth percentile speed, a speed differential, and then looking at the, the facility type and the function, more so than, than warrants for traffic signal control.
The intersection met the warrants for the traffic signal installation?
Yeah, eighty-fourth and Layton has heavy volumes, no doubt. You've heard a lot of testimony tonight about, about that. And I guess to go along with that, the thing I would remind folks is that even Mr. Langemeyer described the situation where there was a vehicle turning right on red, I think a runner that was on the side street. We've, we've heard from folks about friends visiting friends, going from west to east, and unless they're skipping school, the flashers would not be on during any of those activities or have any bearing on any of those three cases that I just described. Again, they run for a half hour to forty-five minutes in the morning, a half hour to forty-five minutes at the departure of school. And so all of that type of activity, nothing is impacted by, by a school speed zone.
Do you have any bill curves or anything that shows the hours of greatest traffic flow in that region of eighty-fourth Street?
Yeah, we sure would. We've got, I think Mickey sent these in the previous memo, which are kind of the peak-hour traffic counts. There's about eight hours of study data in that, but we could certainly give you a time-of-day graph where it shows those, if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for answering all these questions from amateurs sitting up here. And I will now, since Mr. Langemeyer seems to be the, if you're testifying, we've passed the proponents, we're taking opponents now.
But I can still testify because we're both. I have something to say. It doesn't concern me. School Hall seven thirty-three, West Coming. Listen to them, listen to the people. Simple solution. One, the right turn on red. No right turn on red sign or flasher coming off Layton. Two, make it a pedestrian crossing like you did on Fourteenth and Superior and Fourteenth Street, and have the flashers. They're worried about the kids crossing. So you extend the crosswalk time, you put in the flashers, call it a pedestrian crossing, and you don't have to worry about schools. Win, win, win.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, before Mr. Langemeyer comes up, I just wanted to submit something into the record that I received from Lincoln Lancaster Health Department, and it's just a document that shows the child pedestrian safety efforts that they plan to make in two thousand and seventeen, and they have indicated that they would extend these efforts to a special back-to-school night for Cahill kids alone, should we pass and install this. So I would just give this to Teresa. You guys can take a look at it if you want.
Okay, so Mr. Langemeyer is the, apparently the lead proponent of this. I give you a brief rebuttal time.
I'll get the same amount of time that they got, thanks. Our city engineers would have you believe that forty-five mile an hour and four lanes of traffic, two lanes of turning, and then difference, east-west traffic as well, would be safer for our kids in a school zone. But yet, you've heard tonight from several parents that none of them will let their kids cross at that intersection. So I would ask all of you to consider, how the heck is forty-five mile an hour through there with a stoplight, four lanes of traffic, plus all the different turning lanes, safe? The gentleman to my left here acknowledged that the city has discretion on this. They have discretion because standards are meant to be guidelines, not every intersection's the same, not every community is the same, but they have discretion to protect the city from liability. We saw that in two thousand and eight. There was no stoplight there until after we had a fatality. And then the city saw the need to protect themselves from liability and used discretion to bypass the standards or stay within the guidelines of those standards, but put in a stoplight. I would ask the council to look at all the kids that we had back here tonight, even some of them still here, and tell me which one needs to be sacrificed in order for us to have a school zone at this intersection. Forgive me my passion on this. I do not want to see a young life taken unnecessarily just so we can protect these kids, especially when the number has grown exponentially year after year after year. It's only going to continue to grow. At what point do we step in and say, okay, it is time for us as public servants to take responsibility and do the right thing? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please. That was the rebuttal, that was the final. I had called for witnesses before, so.
I'm scared there's some confusion with.
No, none, none up here. Okay, next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, item eleven is the report of claims against the city. This was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane.
I'd like to make a motion that we put on pending the, I guess, the, the claim by Mr. Walter Brewer on the horse trails in Pioneer's Park.
Second.
Do you want to just, instead of placing it on pending, remove it so we can bring it back at a later date?
Teresa, I think you're right. Okay. Please change that to removing and placing it.
Okay. All right. Discussion?
Um, I'd just like to say, I think that's a good move. Give them a little bit longer to negotiate with the city, which is kind of what their goal was, anyway.
I agree with Cindy. They seem to be working, let's, let's keep, let's encourage that.
Please call the roll.
Did we have a second on that?
Yes. It was John.
I do.
Thank you. Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
On the main.
That was on the motion to amend.
Now the main motion, please.
Main motion, yep.
Okay, Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item twelve is a multi-year contract with Hausman Construction, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane.
Mr. Conley has some magic language for us.
Excuse me, I do. If somebody would like to make the motion to amend, what I would include is, after the word mayor in the resolution, it would say, comma, provided, semicolon, "The guaranteed maximum price amendment shall be submitted to the city council for approval," period. And I have, I can give Teresa the.
Thanks, Teresa. I would like to propose the amendment that our council has just read.
Moved by Jane, seconded by?
Benny. So, yeah, second.
Thank you. Can, oh, sorry.
To never really discuss that amendment, right?
Yeah, sure, so that, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, once there's a contract been in, if we're delegating the authority by the, to the mayor, and once there's a contract been, been signed, what happens if we don't approve the maximum?
At that point, and this is anticipated in the contract, you can walk away from it, you can accept the guaranteed maximum price, or we can seek to modify it. That's, that's anticipated in this process.
And, Mr. Chair, when can we expect to see the contract? You said it was still kind of being ironed out.
Yeah, the, uh, the negotiating committee still has to, has to approve it. We're working through the language now. It's hard to say exactly when it'll be ready, a couple of weeks, maybe.
Thank you.
And then, and then, that's when the mayor would then sign it, and then work can actually start. And then whenever we get to the sixty percent design, that's when the price will come back to you for approval.
So you're saying even with today, that, I know there was an encouragement to get this meeting quickly and get this resolution, that there still wouldn't be any work commencing?
It, it will be done as soon as we can get the contract done, they will start, yes. When that will be done, I, I don't know. And again, the negotiating committee does have to approve it.
I don't know why we were pushed so fast, then.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Anyway, would you read the sentence then, again, the language, please? I think this is on, what, line four, in the middle part there?
Uh, excuse me, no, I'm sorry, this would be on line seven.
Okay, okay, mayor was in it twice, okay.
Yes, and I, and I should have clarified that.
Okay.
On line seven, you would add it right after mayor, comma, provided, semicolon, "The guaranteed maximum price amendment shall be submitted to the city council for approval," period.
Please call the roll on the amendment.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next, now the main motion. Discussion on the main motion.
So, okay, so I would be a lot more comfortable if what we were being asked to do was to approve, okay, we have come down to these certain contractors or, or this group and risk management contractor, and we're just giving the mayor authority to go forward with negotiations on it, rather than approving, preapproving a contract that we have no, we're not going to see anything again until we have sixty percent or substantial completion of the project done, and so I'm just not comfortable.
No, it's not, that's not correct. It's, it's sixty percent of the drawings are completed, and then Hausman will be the one providing us the numbers.
That's right.
So it's, it's not sixty percent of the project is, is finished, it's sixty percent of the design, construction drawings, and then they have to submit that not-to-exceed amount back to us for our approval.
So are we, it's, are we looking at nine hundred-plus-thousand just for the drawings?
That's not the, that's not what's actual.
Uh, no. What, what that nine hundred thousand is for pre-GMP, GMP being the guaranteed max, is for that pre-GMP work, and that includes some, some limited construction work that would start, such as clearing the land and maybe putting in some footings and ordering some materials, plus the general conditions costs that the, that the contractor has to keep his people employed and, and keep them working on helping with the design and doing the ordering and all those sorts of things. So it carries through up to the point that we get the sixty percent design, and then the GMP number is submitted.
So it's anticipated that this is what we're going to spend for sixty percent, before we see it again, we're going to spend nine hundred-plus-thousand dollars?
Up to that amount. I, I couldn't tell you exactly everything that's going to get done in that timeframe, but that's, that's the purpose of that money.
I will say, just off the record, really, that the architects are proceeding fairly rapidly, and they're ahead of where they thought they would be. So I think some of this will pull together for us in that regard. But I, I share the kind of nebulous here that where we don't have the contract, even in document language, to preapprove that.
Yeah, I do have, I mean, I'm asking what was online, I'm really concerned with what the, what the public had to look at when it was told we were going to be asked to approve a contract, and the contract wasn't linked online.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do you know, Chris, what exactly remains to be solidified for that contract language?
What we're working on are the general conditions. There, there's, these are very complex contracts, and there's, there's two parts to it. There's, there's a contract which lays out some general terms, who the parties are, what their general responsibilities are, some insurance language, things like that. And then you have general conditions, and these get into work rules about how the project will be carried forward, how, how payments will get processed, how the workforce will be operating, under what safety rules. There's all kinds of things. And while we have a pretty set template, if you will, there always are some things that, that get changed and negotiated a little bit. And so, and I've, I've spent the last part of yesterday and today reviewing the draft that had come in from Hausman. So it's, it's being worked on, and, and I'll be finished on what I'm looking at by tomorrow morning. But then we still have to get the, the negotiating committee back together, and we don't have everybody available for some portion of this week. So that's the reason why I'm hesitant to say how long it's going to take. But we're certainly going to be ready to go back to the committee here pretty shortly.
When you say negotiating committee, who is that?
And Bob Waller would have to tell you who all is on that. Again, this is not a.
Me, so.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the process that we use here. There's a selection committee, and there's a negotiating committee, and they basically are going to put the, the final recommendations to the mayor and then actually have him sign it.
Mr. Chair, so I guess my question is, my, my main concern is the public. When will we have something that the public can look at?
Yeah, and, and as soon as the, I, I suppose that would be either right after the negotiating committee is, is done, or when the mayor signs it.
And that's when it comes back to us?
Not at that point, no.
Yeah. But the contract will be available for the public to see before it comes back to us.
Correct.
I was able to go online, and I got the request for proposal, I got the design from Davis, design for the structure. So that's all there. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's.
But that's not the contract.
It's not the contract, but it's coming back before us.
But, but we're voting on it tonight. I mean, we, that's what we told the public, that's what was published, is that we were being asked to approve the contract, and the public hasn't seen it.
But a contract for something like this is pretty standard.
Yeah. I, I, you're, you're selecting Hausman, number one, that really is the primary purpose here. And then, and then, yes, you are authorizing the mayor to sign the contract when it's ready, understanding that the biggest piece of it is the GMP, and you are still going to get to see that, and, and get to approve that. And so this is an effort to try and keep, keep this process moving along, I guess, is where we're, where we're trying to go with it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next is item thirteen, the contract with Carson Co. Global, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane. Discussion?
Well, I'll go first. You know, I like the concept of, of education and so forth, but eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even if you've got a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, concerns me. I mean, it's money from the taxpayers one place or another, although sometimes NDEQ uses some energy funds or waste funds, I guess, but regardless, it's, it's money. And as I looked at all the parameters, there, there's a, a lot in there that I, I'm concerned about, this is creating a lot of costs. I don't know if there's some way we can send it back and, and see. It concerns me. And then I think this whole idea that we're labeling it this industry standard, I guess, now of behavior modification, you know, again, I go back to my George Orwell poster of Big Brother's Watching You, but I, I don't like throwing that out in the public and saying, you know, we're, we're engineering you socially here and, and your behavior. I'd like to see a way we could get the, the costs down. That's just a lot of money.
Okay, Jane?
I guess I can understand people's concern. It, it is a huge amount of money. However, we did have these discussions about the education component when we've had many debates and had brought how important recycling is to the city of Lincoln, and we actually did budget for this amount, knowing that we would have the grant. I guess I wish Donna probably were here, and I don't know if Mickey could address these concerns, but it seems like we did have three bidders, and I don't know if Carson and Company were the, the lowest bidder. I assume that they were, that's why they were selected, so that even with one of the alternative bidders, which was more on the incentives and rewards, it sounds like, and I don't know, and I'm willing to throw up, perhaps we should delay this for at least a week so that we could get a little bit more details on, was Carson and Company the lowest bidder? Was, what was the reason why we didn't select the company that had the rewards program or the incentives? Or is that also included in the proposal by Carson and Company as well? So I, I think it's legitimate to have these questions. I, I'm concerned that we are going to be spending as much as possible on the education side, which probably includes a lot of positive reinforcement, which is, you know, behavior modification, and a lot of the more scientific, technical terms probably mean the same thing, that we all hope to get the same result, that we're changing people's behaviors so that there's a greater participation in recycling, so that we can reduce the amount of pounds per capita that we're throwing away in our landfills. So I don't know if it's appropriate. So I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to entertain a motion that we...
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
They want to say some things.
Yeah, I did want to say that Donna Garden told us that the selection was made by content, not by money. That's what she said, that they looked at the RFPs and they chose by content. And so I think what I've been hearing all day is that people are not wanting to spend that kind of money on that content, and I heard even the gentleman tonight, talking about the carrot and the stick, which I talk about all the time. I do believe if you want people to change their behavior, then you give them a positive reason to do that, and so I was, as I looked through it, I was concerned about the content as well. I'm not sure why that was the selection they made, but at this point in time, I'm not ready to support this resolution.
Benny?
First off, I want to thank my fellow members of the council. You guys did a lot of heavy lifting on this before I came on board, and I'm thankful for that in more ways than you know. But I also had the questions about the competitive bidding. I did hear the content question. I want to see more incentives. You know, the conversation you guys had before I joined you was penalties for not complying. I'd like to see more incentives to encourage people comply, excuse me, and we can extend the life of our landfill, both the current one and the future one, if we remove some of those items. I would like to talk about maybe delaying this and get a little bit more information.
Okay. I will make a comment, then I'll entertain a motion. Recalling what we went through before and discussing education, it was not education in isolation, it was, much of the discussion was education versus ban, instead of a ban, spend the money on education. Having said that, I can tell you all that today, not emails, I'm talking about phone calls from constituents and people walking up to me and saying, Roy, listen to this. I've had twelve people today alone tell me they don't like this because of the amount of money it is. So I will now entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we delay and probably keep open public hearing on this item for two weeks.
For two weeks? And the purpose of two weeks is because the next week is, why? Just two weeks, you just think it's the right amount of time?
I think that makes it August seventh and August fourteenth would be better.
Okay. So is there a second to that motion? John's not going to be here.
I will second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, to be moved, delayed two weeks. Moved by Jane, seconded by Benny.
Into public hearing, too.
With public hearing.
Congratulations on the public hearing.
Okay, discussion on that? John had said he won't be here.
That makes me unhappy.
Okay, makes me very sad. Okay. All right, let's go. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Oh, we need to do, that wasn't an amendment, that was the whole, yeah.
That was the whole thing.
We're good, we're good with that.
Right now, the next item.
All right. Next, our public hearing ordinance is second reading, items fourteen and fifteen. Ordinance is third reading, item sixteen. Street name change one-seven-zero-zero-two, renaming Seaver's Lane, located west of South Twenty-Sixth Street and south of Rookabye Road as Seaver's Place, introduced by Rebold. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next is item seventeen, change of zone one-seven-zero-one-four, application of Wayne and Laura Pester for a change from AG Agricultural to AGR Agricultural Residential on property located at Southwest Twenty-Fifth and West Denton Road, introduced by Rebold. So moved. Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Cindy. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item eighteen, change of zone one-seven-zero-one-one, application of Roger H. Schwissau Revocable Trust for a change from AG Agricultural to R-three Residential on property located at North Forty-Ninth and Alvo Road, introduced by Rebold. So moved.
Great. Now we need a second.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Benny. Now we have an amendment or an action?
That's correct. Based on some confusion about when the public hearing was and some photos we've gotten, some concerns we have with this project, changing the zone from agricultural to residential, I am going to move that we delay this with public hearing to August twenty-first.
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
But I'd also like to have the applicant provide information showing that they have mitigated some of the circumstances and issues in the photo. I know that he testified that he had, but we've heard other information from residents where that is not the case, and I guess I would feel more comfortable if they had a chance to present us civil engineering drawings showing that these issues that we are seeing in these photos have been rectified and corrected.
Okay.
So, well, my understanding is that Public Works is working on that, too, the folks said. Water, watershed management are working this out, and so I don't know, I guess we'd have to ask law if we have the ability to ask that that engineering study be done, since it's a zoning. I mean, I, too, believe that we, it would be nice if we, he would mitigate things, he certainly should meet with the homeowners in order to...
Here, we can direct that to take place, can we?
Yeah, I don't think you even demand that he provide a study, but you can ask for additional information and clarification, if he can show that it's been completed. Just say that that's a concern, that's one of the reasons the public hearing is being reopened, and so just say he ought to become prepared to address that.
Okay. So I would just, that's what my motion would be then, to delay the hearing and public, and action on it, public hearing and action, reopen, I'm sorry, public hearing, delay action on it until August twenty-first, and before that time for us to receive some, I guess, proof, for lack of a better word, that there had been some mitigation with the local homeowners and the water issues that we're seeing.
So it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Just a question, does applicant get notified of our request for additional information and verification? How does that work?
Or do we have to order that?
I know that he gets notified of the hearing.
We'll send a letter out to him and let him know that it's been reopened, and he's asked to address that issue, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
August twenty-first.
I'm sorry, five to zero.
Yep.
Next is item nineteen, repealing ordinance two-zero-zero-two-nine, levying an occupation tax upon the businesses and users of space within the West Haymarket Sports Park Enhanced Employment Area, and repealing ordinance two-zero-zero-three-zero, authorizing the issuance of a TIF tax allocation bond and occupation tax revenue bond to fund certain improvements within the West Haymarket Sports Park redevelopment project, introduced by Rebold. So moved.
Second. Moved by Jane, seconded by John. Discussion.
Just, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to remind that this was all authority to do something that never happened, so...
And for my edification, where was this located?
This was out near the West Haymarket Sports Park, out near the Haymarket Ballfield.
Okay.
All right, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items twenty through twenty-five. Ordinances first reading are items twenty-six through thirty.